All right, good evening everybody and welcome to our September 23rd, 2023 special meeting for City Council. I just want to first of all apologize that we're starting late. We had a closed session that ran over so we will get right into this meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Freitas.
President.
Councilmember Torres Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum at 5:52 PM.
Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I consider it lawful to declare the city of New York a State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America.
All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our September 23rd, 2023, special meeting for City Council. I just want to, first of all, apologize that we're starting late. We had a closed session that ran over, so we will get right into this meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Councilmember Freitas.
President.
Councilmember Torres Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Bernal.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum at 5:52 PM.
Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? So tonight's meeting is a process for appointment to fill the city clerk vacancy. I think it's Mr. City Attorney, will you be the person that will be leading us on this? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. This evening, the City Council is meeting in special session to consider the appointment of the city clerk. We provided a staff report that outlines the process. This is a process that was followed the last time the city clerk was appointed. And basically, I see our candidates are here. So the process will be that we will have each candidate, right now, can come up and provide up to a five-minute presentation, just an opening statement, who they are, you know, what they want to accomplish, what they think their qualifications are. You have their 400-word statements in your packet. Once that's done, the candidates will be escorted back to a room so that they do not hear the council's questions. We will bring each candidate out alphabetically. When they're finished, they will go back. And we have prepared some questions for you. The preference is that we move through this, and each of you ask one question. But if there is something that you feel is essential to ask on top of that, or in lieu of my request a bit, we go through those five questions. And then if there is anything important or specific, or a follow-up item, that you can then ask, you know, some limited follow-up questions, or questions to ferret out, you know, qualifications and other things. It's really at your pleasure, but staff's request is that we try to keep the format essentially the same for each candidate. So once that's done, after we've completed questioning, then we will have public comment. If anyone is here before you deliberate, anyone in the public will be permitted to speak on this subject, the appointment of the new clerk. And then after that, it comes back to you. And at that point, it's a simple majority vote. Somebody makes a motion, somebody makes a second. There will be a resolution that will amend to insert the candidate's name. And once that's done, once the vote is taken, we can swear in the city clerk. And he or she can be the city clerk by 7:00 PM this evening, if we move quickly. So that's the process. Before we proceed, are there any questions that the council asks of staff?
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Freitas?
None of this, just a point of order. We came back from closed session. Are you going to report out, or wait until the 7 o'clock?
We will do that in our regular session.
Thank you.
And in fairness, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask, do any of the candidates who are here this evening, it's a little different, but to ensure a fair process, if they have questions about process, perhaps we can permit that?
Sure, absolutely. Any questions from any of the candidates? It seemed pretty straightforward. All right, seeing none, we can go ahead and get started. We have the five-minute presentation from each candidate first, and then we will get into the interview questions. So we'll start with Michael Mandy. Mr. Mandy, if you'd like to come on down, and our city clerk will set the timer for five minutes, and tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate it. My name is Michael Mandy, and I would like to share a little bit about myself and why I would like to represent Antioch and its citizens as the interim city clerk. I've been a resident of Antioch for 31 years. I've owned and operated a business here. I've raised my family here. And my wife even runs her practice out on Lone Tree Way for over 10 years. I have experienced Antioch as it's gone through both highs and lows. And I, and my neighbors, fellow citizens, we'd like to reach those highs again. The city clerk might not seem like a very important job to those who don't understand the functions, but it is a very important job. Beyond keeping minutes, filing paperwork, and processing permits, the city clerk is the connection between the government officials and the people of Antioch. The Brown Act made the open and transparent running of California governmental bodies law, and it's the city clerk's job to assure that the principles covered by the act are adhered to by the city council. The citizens of Antioch deserve an impartial and dedicated individual to serve this position. Part of the job of keeping Antioch's workings transparent is keeping the public informed, aware of when the meetings take place, and what items are on the agenda, as well as the outcomes of those meetings. It is essential that the city clerk keep careful records, communicate clearly, and help to manage public meetings and elections in a way that is fair and impartial. The posture of impartiality is particularly important in these times when citizens from all backgrounds worry that they're not being represented fairly. It is important that each person who lives in Antioch knows that the city clerk and all the members of the council represent all of them equally. My resume may not be filled with time spent in governmental positions, but I believe I have the skills needed to fulfill the duties of the city clerk. I am meticulous with paperwork and have plenty of experience with keeping careful records with the years I have spent managing my insurance office, as well as with the experience I've had on the executive board of the Communication Workers of America. It's my union which I oversaw elections, prepared, presented dockets. This also required me to be the liaison between the members and the company's management. I have more than simply experience that I believe will be invaluable in this position. What I do have in great supply is I have a love for this city of Antioch. I have made my home here for over three decades, and I have the belief that Antioch can be a place where people feel proud to call their home. I believe we can change the narrative surrounding this city and help people see it not as a place filled with crime and decline, but as a city on the rise. This could be a place filled with hope and connection, where neighbors chat amicably, and parents feel safe letting their children play at the park. As city clerk, I believe I can help bridge that gap between the citizens of Antioch and the government of Antioch by being a liaison who they can trust and feel comfortable speaking to, knowing that I am working for them and not just simply here for a paycheck. I humbly ask you support my bid for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandy. All right.
Go back, or answer questions?
Yeah, we'll have questions after.
After.
Five folks. Could Mr. Vincent Manuel come on up, please?
Yes, sir, you're up. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and participate in the process of naming your next city clerk. As you know, I am very well familiar with the office of the city clerk, having worked in that office for a while. In addition, very familiar with the workings of the city of Antioch. Over the 35 years that I've been a resident of the city of Antioch, the 400 words kind of summarizes my activity throughout those 35 years. I have not only been a resident, but an active participant as a volunteer on almost all of the boards and commissions within the city during those years. And I always found it a joy to be a part of the process, working with the citizens on all of the issues that come up day-to-day. And I want to continue serving the city in the role of city clerk. I'm very familiar with the responsibilities, the part of the management team that it is, and where it needs to be in terms of process and procedure, Brown Act issues, public act requests, filling those. And then also, when it's election time, making sure that the election codes are followed for the rules and processes and procedures. So the 400 words talks about all of the things that I've done and places I've been. But I'd like to be in this position again to serve the city that I've loved and been a part of for 35 years. And of course, you know that I've worked for the county for 25 years, for Contra Costa County Supervisor, Federal Glover. So add that, please consider me as a viable candidate, and I look forward to the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. All right, next is Mr. Eric Guyen. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your last... Gwen? All right, Mr. Gwen. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I would like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to stand here today and express my interest as city clerk of Antioch. After reading the other four candidates' letter of interest, it got me thinking. There's no way in chance I'll get appointed to the position. You're all wondering why I'm suddenly so short. I'll be very honest. I don't have a background in public service, nor have participated in council member meetings. My background is just simple. I served in United States Navy for four years, then after that, three years as a National California Guardsman. My skill is that I'm well to communicate with clients at job site, either phone call, email, from start to finish, as well as preparing reports or work order in a timely manner. I'm also willing to learn new things and take on many challenges. I hope I will get a chance to prove myself as city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gwen. Thank you. Next is Lori Olgertak.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow residents. I've been proud to call Antioch my home for over 50 years. This is where I raised my family in a small business. During my 12 years of service as a councilwoman, I gained a strong understanding of how our city operates and a real respect for the important role the city clerk plays in keeping government transparent and effective. The city clerk's job is much more than keeping records. It's about serving the public. In my time on the council, I've worked closely with residents and staff, focusing on customer service and making sure people's concerns were addressed in a professional and timely manner. If I'm selected for this role, my priorities will be advancing transparency and encouraging community involvement. That means improving public access to city records, making sure information is easy to understand, and keeping residents informed so they can fully participate in local government. By fostering accountability and open communication, I believe we can strengthen trust between the city hall and the community we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Jerome Terrell, please.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Jerome Terrell. I've been a barber in the city of Antioch for, since 2007, so this past June, made 18 years. I've been an Antioch resident for the past 12 years. And then during the duration of me being a barber, at first I thought I would just, you know, do it for a couple of years, and then I would kind of go on to something else, you know, maybe go back to school, you know, kind of focus on something else. But as time went on, I realized that the job itself was bigger than me. It was about the people. Yeah, the clientele, you want to make sure that the clientele there gets serviced, and of course, you want to get paid, but it was bigger than that. A lot of my clients, over the years, I've developed a relationship with them. A lot of them have invited me to their baby showers, to their mom's birthdays, and I don't even know who their moms are. A lot of them have invited me to just different various things, retirement parties. And I've realized that it's bigger than me. It's about the people. And without me being a barber, without the people patronizing my business, I'm not a barber. I can't be a barber. And so, just like the city of Antioch, without the people, there's no city. And so, I am proficient in typing, Microsoft Word, those kinds of things. I really want to learn something new. I love cutting hair, but I really want to, you know, expand my horizons and learn something new and elevate. And I really hope that I can be the next city clerk. Thank you. Good evening.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so we are now going to move on to the part where the City Council is going to ask questions of each of the candidates. The way this will work, as the city attorney mentioned, is that we'll have each of the candidates, one at a time, stay in the room. The other candidates will leave and wait in the HR conference room, and then you'll come in one at a time. So if we could have Mr. Mandy stay here, and if the other candidates could please... Who's going to be taking them out? Monica, if you guys could please follow Monica, she's in the blue blazer, and she will show you out. All right, so Mr. Mandy, if you want to come on up. Council, is everybody willing to take one question as we go through this? Is that all right with everybody? Okay, so we can start with Councilmember Freitas and work our way down the row here until we get to Councilmember Wilson for the last one. So we'll go ahead and ask you each questions, which were in the staff report, and then if there's any follow-up questions council has, you're welcome to ask those as well. So Councilmember Freitas?
So you've already seen the questions because they were part of the staff report. You know, how does the applicant view the role of the city clerk? And specifically in your answer, one of the things that I think the council and the community wants to know, it is a part-time position. It is an elected position. So I would be very curious in how many hours per week you would dedicate to actually being in the office doing the work of the city clerk.
Well, thank you very much. So the role of the city clerk, as I explained, as I stated, it's basically the secretary for the officials, the mayor, council treasurer. You keep the records, you prepare the agendas and everything else that was written in there. How I am aware that it is a part-time position. However, right now currently, I am working at AT&amp;T. I climb telephone poles for a living. I've been out on disability for the last couple of months, and I'm ready to go back, but then this opportunity arrived, and I would like to change my life path and do this, because this was what I did for over 25 years, doing insurance. Insurance is contract work and dealing with customers and dealing with people, and filing paperwork, and then following up on that paperwork. And it was something that I've always wanted to do. People always joke about, "I don't want an office job," and "I don't want to be..." I love office work. I don't know why people hate that. It's, I love keeping records. I love making sure the paperwork goes to the right place, and I enjoy following up and making sure that work gets done. And I understand it's part-time, but since I'm out on disability, I would then quit that job, not go back, and this would be my position. So I am prepared to devote as much time needed that the job requires, because I don't have anything else in the way.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Torres Walker?
Thank you. Just as a follow-up to that question, do you understand that the city clerk's office is under the city manager's office? So like the city manager manages the city clerk's staff?
Correct. Yes, I understand there would be supervisory... It is a position that you would have a supervisor. I am aware of that.
What would you see your relationship to the city manager who managed the clerk's office, and you who are appointed to the clerk's office? How would you see that relationship? How would you see yourself building a relationship, a trust? And what would that work look like for you?
Well, it's kind of like the job that I have in a garage. I work at a garage at AT&amp;T, and I have a manager. The manager doesn't go out to the customers' houses. The manager doesn't do other work. The manager trusts you to go out and do your job correctly. And your manager, you want to make your manager look good, so that's why you do the best you can. And the manager has to trust that you will do the job correctly the first time.
And so, and you do understand that if any staff in the city clerk's office have a complaint about you specifically, that that would actually go to the city manager?
Correct.
Thank you. The next question is, what knowledge do you have of computer systems and electronic platforms that might be used in the city clerk's position?
I ran an insurance agency for 25 years, starting back in the 90s. I was one of the first agencies in the Bay Area. I was one of the first agencies in the Bay Area to integrate emails. Back then, everyone was doing fax machines and FedEx-ing things, and I was scanning things and using emails. I'm very proficient in Microsoft, Windows, Word, Excel. Those were all things that I've had to do in my insurance office and even FedEx. But just, I'm... Each insurance company that I had to deal with had their own individual program. So when a customer calls you and says, "I need homeowner's insurance," you would have to, I would have to figure out which company and then open up that company's proprietary program. Each company's program was different. Farmers, State Farm, Liberty Mutual, they all had different programs, and I had to learn each one. So I'm very, I learn new programs easily, and I'm very comfortable with researching things, and I deal with computers all the time.
All right, thank you. What is the specific role of the city clerk under the Brown Act, California Government Code, and the California Elections Code?
Well, the Elections Code is the correspondent, comprehensive body of law that details the rules, procedures, and regulations for all elections. It governs the election administrations, voter registration, the parties, and campaign finance. The Government Code is one of the twenty-nine legal codes that compromise the general statutory laws of California and provide a comprehensive framework for the government of the state and its subdivisions. It covers areas such as the structure, the powers of state and local government, personnel, and planning. The Brown Act is to make sure that everything that goes on in these council meetings is out in the open, available for the public. There's no secret meetings or anything like that.
All right. Thank you. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I heard us. Someone's coughing. All right.
Yeah, I thought that was a laugh.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem.
Number four. How would you balance outside interests, including other civic, community, and political interests?
A microphone.
That's okay, I heard you.
Should have read my note there.
That's okay, I heard you.
Let me start over again. So how would you, how would you balance outside interests, including other civic and community and political interests, with the work of the city clerk?
Well, the outside interests, as I explained, I'm out on disability right now, and I'm planning on, if I get this position, to leave that. So this would be my position. I would treat it as a full-time position. I don't have any outside interests. My children are raised and gone. I'm not going to baseball games, or, "Oh, I've got this on Thursdays," or, "My bowling night is Mondays." I don't have that. I'm here at your disposal.
So you would make it a full-time position?
In my mind, it would be a full-time position.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm available for it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I follow up?
Yes.
So you do realize that this is an interim appointment?
Correct.
Only till November 2026?
Correct. And then it becomes an elected position. So then I would have to get the signatures and do what I can.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And for the last question, Councilmember Wilson.
All right. What insurance can you provide that you will timely carry out the duties for the remainder of the term?
Well, as I said, I would not have a second job to fall back on. This would be my job. And I've always, when I ran my insurance agency, the buck stopped with me. I didn't have a boss looking over. I had to make sure that someone was properly covered, that the promises I gave them, I had to keep. And I definitely am a man of my word.
I do have a follow-up question to one of the earlier questions, question two. You had stated earlier about when you worked in your office, you were able to bring it up-to-date by, I guess, introducing Microsoft Office. You talked about bringing, going from fax machines to computers. As you know, the city clerk works closely with the State Fair Practices Committee, and there's a lot, everything's being converted to online. How comfortable do you feel with, you know?
I'm surprised it has taken this long to convert.
I mean, it's converted, but it still has a way to go. I'm just curious how you would handle finishing out that process.
I love computer work. I'm very comfortable sitting at a desk and playing with computers. Not playing with, but working companies' proprietary programs, inputting information, sending it, receiving it, processing it. I'm very comfortable around computers.
And you'd be comfortable enough if you had to, you know, call up to the Secretary of State's office to get the information you needed?
Correct. Or I could drive up there if you want. It's not that far.
All right, yes. Councilmember Torres Walker.
I want to go back to question four because I understand you answered it as like there would be no other competing interest. I'm gonna quit my day job, I'm gonna make this a full-time position, which we all wish we could quit our day job and make this full-time, but it's not possible. But when I read that question, what came up for me is it says, "Outside interests, including civic, community, political interests around the work of the city clerk." So it is an elected position, right?
Correct.
It is a position where people are going to be on you, hanging on you, wanting potentially political flavors from you. Like, how would you handle it if somebody came to you from the community and asked you to compromise your position as the city clerk to meet their own political needs? How would you respond to that?
Well, I have a responsibility to my job.
Ethically, correct?
Ethically. I am a very ethical person. Again, with insurance, I have to take courses every two years on ethics. You can't take someone's money and promise them something and then just not send the paperwork in because if they have a claim and the company says, "We've never received anything," oh, he kept the money. No, I've, my insurance office, you have to be ethical. You have to have two separate bank accounts, an operating account and a trustee account. That trustee account is where the company, the person gives you the check, you deposit it in that, you take out your commission, and you send the rest to the company. And then you deposit the rest into the operating account. So I have a very high standard of that.
So nobody approached you and asked you to apply for this position so they could further their own political interests by using you in this position as a tool?
No, I'm, I'm not a tool.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one.
Yes.
So how would you measure success if you were appointed?
How would I measure success in?
In your position.
In the, success as opposed to the city of Antioch, or success in terms of personal success?
If you were appointed city clerk, how would you assess yourself as being successful or not successful?
I would consider myself being successful because I would be in a position to help and serve the community. That's why I was the shop steward in our union at work. Because when people get in trouble, the company comes after them, and I would have to sit at a desk, just very similar to this, and say, "What did you do? How did we solve this?" Okay, the company wants to give you thirty-day suspension. We'll tell you what. Why don't we negotiate how we can make him a better employee? I enjoy helping people. The job is kind of almost like being a defense attorney. You know, I want to help this person not get taken advantage of and make sure that he's being treated right and treated fairly. And then I was elected onto the executive board, which was putting dockets out and saying, "Okay, we had these three people who got in trouble with management. Let me go over this." And I would run it by the board, and they would say whether I did the right decision or not the right decision.
All right, any other questions of Mr. Mandy? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mandy. And Monica will show you, show you out, and we'll bring, we'll bring in Mr. Manuel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Manuel, come on up to the podium, and we're going to pepper you with a few questions. All right, we're going to ask you five or so questions. They're in the staff report, maybe a couple of extras. Start with Councilmember Freitas.
Mr. Manuel, how do you act... Excuse me. So, Mr. Manuel, how do you actually view the role of the city clerk?
The city clerk is a partner with the council, but an independent person who's there to make sure that all of the functionary, the paperwork, the processing, the records management is taken care of, and to listen and be attentive.
So if you were appointed to this position, how many hours would you dedicate per week to actually being in the office doing the job of city clerk?
Well, that's interesting because it's a partnership with the elected city council person, I mean, the elected clerk, who in this case would be appointed, and the administrative team, that's the functioning, everyday, working folks who do most, the majority of the heavy lifting of the city clerk's office. So you partner with them to understand their needs and the function of the office as it's described, and then you fit in your piece as necessary. Because again, it's a part-time position. It's not a full-time position, but you certainly want to make yourself available as needed to have the paperwork processed, to have signatures done, to be able to prepare for meetings, and understand all of the things that are going on at the time. So a number to, say, twenty hours per week or forty hours per week? Not exactly sure, but in my case, at this particular time, I'd be willing to do whatever is necessary to make sure that the functioning of the office is a complete process from the folks who work all day, every day, to the piece that I'm responsible for.
Councilmember Torres Walker.
Yeah. Hello.
Hello.
So just a follow-up to that question. When you mentioned operation and staffing in the city clerk's office, is it, is it your understanding that the every, the data, like the operations, the day-to-day activity in the clerk's office is under the management of the city manager's office? And so how would you see yourself being able to work with the staff of the city clerk's office, the city manager, and yourself? Like, how would you see that relationship work?
Well, it's a relationship that's similar to the way the mayor and the council members operate with the city manager and the city attorney. You focus on the things that you're responsible for. You have questions and comments and concerns and issues that come up, and you focus, and you work with the city manager to get those things answered, meetings scheduled, et cetera, et cetera. And then you are on independent bodies yourselves that you go out and participate in. The city clerk's office is under administration of the city manager and looks to leadership from her. And as an independently appointed city clerk, you work with that team. So you don't have an independent role that you set, "I'm going to be the new city clerk, and this is what we're going to do. We're going to go down this road." You're going to follow the plan that's already in place. They went through a very detailed budget process that kind of outlined where they've been, where they are, and where they want to go. There is a plan in place. There are new staff members in place. So I think it's in, it's in a good place to continue to follow the city manager's direction, and I would be a part of that.
Thank you. What knowledge do you have of computer systems and electronic platforms that might be used in the city clerk position?
Well, because I was there not too long ago, I know all of the systems that are involved, both external, Microsoft Office, et cetera, but also the internal workings of the city clerk's office as it relates to public work, records requests, and the processing of those, as well as processing the weekly agendas, the agenda management system, how all of the departments input their various reports, how it's all put together. And it's kind of like the Wizard of Oz, and you don't see all of it, but it magically appears every week, special meetings included. Yeah.
All right. What is the specific role of the city clerk under the Brown Act, the California Government Code, and the California Elections Code?
Well, the Brown Act is making sure that all of our meetings are scheduled in enough time, that they're publicly noticed, that they're noticed outside on the boards, wherever it is that we've established as those places to post those meeting notices. And sometimes, meetings are requested that may be a little tight on a turnaround, and they might not be able to be done only because the time period is too short to do a good notice. So then it has to be pushed back a little bit, rescheduling has to be done, et cetera. But that's the role of the city clerk's office, is to make sure that those meetings are posted in a timely manner, they're thorough, they're thorough in the information that's being posted, and that they're accurate in everything that they should be. And they allow for public input, of course.
How about the government and the Elections Code?
Yeah, the government and Elections Code comes into play during the election process. You have to be very familiar with the roles and the procedures and the process of the particulars that are involved in the election process. So if you're not very familiar, you have to become very familiar and make sure that all the rules and processes are followed. And there was the last one.
Elections Code.
Okay, that was the Elections Code.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, next. Okay, next, how will you balance outside interests, including other civic, community, and political interests with this position as clerk?
Well, understanding the role of the elected, appointed city clerk, there's certainly duties to be done by that particular role, but then also as an independent voter of the city, you are to kind of focus and remain balanced in anything you say and do. You don't have the ability to really go out there and hang the signs on the buildings, et cetera, as most people might want to do. You have a more reserved role, and you have to understand that that's the role of the city clerk and the duties and responsibilities that go along with it. So the role is very much reserved and focused on the issues at hand.
Well, being that you're familiar with all of the community events and so forth that we get invited to, how would you manage that or balance that? Because I'm sure you would get invitations to go to community events.
Well, as a...
Is that something you would be interested in doing?
I've been doing that for twenty-five years for District Five, including Antioch, all of those twenty-five years. So I've been everywhere and met everyone, but as the appointed city clerk, as a member of the team, then I would want to go out and be a part of the community and specifically try to share information on the city clerk's office, on meetings that are coming up, looking forward to opportunities to get a little bit ahead of the ball in terms of advertising, recreation events, all of the events that happen in the city that are very noteworthy and things that are coming up. So it would be an opportunity for me to share with the public, as well as listening to them and being a part of community events. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wilson.
I have a follow-up before my question. So going back to question two in regards to computer systems, as you're familiar with, we have a lot of systems that come out of the Secretary of State's office, Political Practice Office. What's your familiarity with those systems?
Oh, I'm very familiar with all of those systems, the Form 700s that have to be completed by all of the elected officials, as well as many employee department here types, and processing those forms and anything else that needs to be completed on behalf of the city officials and employees, what have you. Yeah.
And you're familiar with the NetFile system and being able to reach out to Secretary of State?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
All right. So the actual question I have is, what assurance can you provide that you will timely carry out the duties for the remainder of the term?
Well, that seems to be a trick question, but really, the answer would be, I would assume, standing here tonight, that I would be prepared to serve the entire rest of the term and make myself as available as I possibly can be for all of the meetings that I would be required to be a part of, and I would look forward to it. I really am interested in continuing to serve the city of Antioch.
All right, thank you. Any other, any other follow-up questions?
Yeah, I want to go back to question number four. So as the question reads, it says, "How would the applicant balance outside interests, including civic, community, and political interests with their work as a city clerk?" And I, I'm assuming I should ask everybody this, to be fair. When I read this, it made me think about the position that you would be in and anybody who might want to approach you to use you as a tool in that position for their own political interests. You know, that sometimes happens where you have a relationship with somebody, you know somebody, they want something from the city clerk's office, they feel like they should just have it. How do you respond to something like that?
Well, having worked for a supervising level for twenty-five years, ran into that kind of situation many times, many occasions, and one of the things that we prided ourselves on was being able to respond to people's issues and concerns, but we didn't guarantee that they would get the response they wanted. And to them, that would be all that they wanted. They get frustrated when they aren't able to get a city official or county official in this case, and they call around and they get exhausted. When they call our office, we say, you know what? Stop calling around. We'll find out who the appropriate person is, connect you to that person so that you can get a response. It might not be the one you want, but you certainly can get a response, so then you can move forward with what your issue is. That's one piece. The other piece is that as the elected supervisor, I was a staff to him, to advise him. I was not the politician. I escorted him everywhere and anywhere, all of the time, but my role was not to be an advocate or a liaison and work the room. He was that person. I understand that difference. My role is to be an independent elected city clerk, appointed city clerk, to do the role and the responsibilities of the job, but not to get involved with the duties and the responsibilities of the city council.
So nobody asked you to apply for this position to use you as a tool for their own political interests?
Oh, absolutely not.
Thank you.
I was just so excited that the opportunity arose, unfortunately, but yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I think that's all the questions. Thank you, Mr. Manuel. Monica will show you...
Thank you.
Welcome back, Mr. Nguyen. We're gonna ask you five or so questions, and we're gonna start with Councilmember Afretis.
So how do you view your role as a city clerk?
Pretty much it's like a normal, like administrator's job, but with a twist of political point of views.
Do you want to elaborate?
Taking phone calls from customers, asking for something, like the public coming in and asking questions, hey, I need this, how do I acquire this license and so forth.
So if you were to be appointed as a city clerk, how many hours per week would you be able to devote actually to the job, coming in to the job? It is a part-time position, but, you know, do you have a ballpark figure, how much time you can devote?
Well, if permitted, I can do it Monday through Friday, 40 hours a week.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Hello. A follow-up to the question on the role of the city clerk. So do you understand that the city manager's office is the direct administrator to the city clerk's office? And so there would need to be a relationship between the city clerk and the city manager? How would you see yourself building the relationship with the city manager, given that the city manager is administrator of the office that you will be overseeing?
Pretty much I will ask questions, keep in communications, email, you know, hopefully by Teams or anything like that.
Thank you. Next question, what knowledge do you have of computer systems and electronic platforms that might be used in the city clerk position?
Microsoft applications, Microsoft Word, some Excel sheets, and probably through communication is Microsoft Teams or Zoom.
All right, thank you. What is the specific role of the city clerk under the Brown Act, the California Government Code, and the California Elections Code?
So it's pretty much making sure that city council are in compliance with federal states and local statutes and regulations. Also ensures that actions are properly executed, recorded, and archived as well. And also act as a liaison to the public and city council.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Rocha.
Okay, number four. Okay, so number four, how will you balance outside interests, including other civic, community, and political interests with your work as a city clerk?
Well, to be openly about and honest about, I really have to choose wisely, any interest that would be conflicting with work as city clerk, either to put that outside, on the side, or hold, on hold, or stepped out from that interest.
So clarify that again for me, so you would, how would you balance that out? I mean, you're gonna get invited, I'm sure, to events, community, you know, you have your role, which is a part-time position, as we've discussed already, but along with being involved with working as a city clerk, there'll be activities, community events that you may be asked to go to, to participate in. Is that something you'd be open to, and how would you balance that?
Yeah, I'll be open to that, maybe like during the weekends.
Okay.
Weekends or Sundays, give my time there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I want to go back to question two in regards to computer systems. Are you, in this particular position, a lot of this stuff is done online, especially around the elections. Are you familiar with the NetFile system in the Secretary of State's office?
No, not the online, but there are other programs that I used to do, that program called D-365, that my company used to work, I used to work for, that we do that a lot online. We can upload reports or work orders for clients, they can look at online, they can view it, they can make any changes.
So, I forgot, I had this question. So through the Fair Political Practices Office, that's in the Secretary of State's office, there's a certain way that things need to be filed. If you were not familiar, would you not hesitate to call someone in the Secretary of State's office?
I would ask somebody to give me more assistance and knowledge how to use that program.
Okay, that's fair. And then my actual question is, what assurance can you provide that you will carry out the duties for the remainder of the term of this office?
It's like I was saying, you know, I will give my 120%, but I will do the best to my ability and carry out the duties for the remainder of the term.
Thank you.
All right, following questions?
Yes, going back to question four, how would the applicant balance outside interests, including other civic, community, and political interests in their work as a city clerk? So sometimes, you know, you in this role, it's appointed, an elected role, it's being appointed now, sometimes people might come to you and ask you to do something for them, do them a favor, might want you, you know, to basically violate your own ethics and in a position to further their own political interests. How would you handle a situation like that?
Well, I'll have to be honest with them and tell them what I do, and, you know, if it's something that, taking bribes or whatever, then that's a no-no, that's a slap on the hand, so.
And so nobody asks you to apply for this position, so they could use your position as a tool for their own political interests? No.
No.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from Mr. Nguyen? All right, thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Ms. Overchalk. We are gonna ask five or so questions of you, and Councilmember Afretis will get started.
Okay.
So how do you view the actual role of the city clerk? How do you actually view the role of a city clerk?
Thank you. The city clerk is really the person who makes sure our local democracy runs smoothly. They handle elections, keep track of city records, and make sure everything the council does is transparent to the public. They're also the ones making sure we follow the laws, like the Political Reform Act, the Brown Act, and the Public Records Act. On a day-to-day level, the clerk is often the point of contact for the community, answering questions, helping people get information, and organizing official ceremonial events. It's a demanding job, but it's also a really important one because it keeps our local government open, ethical, and accountable.
So as you know, it is a part-time job. How many hours per week would you dedicate to being in the office and actually doing the work responsibilities of the city clerk?
I don't know that there's actually an hour time, Councilmember Afretis. It's whatever time that you need me, or the public needs me, or the job needs me. That's what I will be there for.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Torres Walker.
Hello.
Hi.
Before I get to my question, how do you, do you understand that the city manager's office is the administrator of the city clerk's office? And if so, what, how would you make the relationship work? So the city manager is really over the city clerk staff, right? And then you in the elected, or appointed, and probably elected position as the city clerk, how do you work with the city manager? Because the city manager is the administrator.
I know you're going with this, Councilmember Torres Walker. I fully understand the relationship between the city clerk, the staff of the city, the deputy city clerk, and the assistant city clerk are acting, that says acting, sorry, all of the, that department. I understand the relationship, I understand that the city manager is Ms. Bessie Scott. I know that she oversees all the staff with, through the whole city. Council has no say over the staff, none of the elected, the treasurer or the city clerk. We have no say. But it's important to build that relationship with the city manager and the city clerk's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question, what knowledge do you have of computer systems and electronic platforms that might be used in the city clerk position?
Well, I know that the city clerk's office currently uses Microsoft Word and SharePoint, and there may be other systems as well. I'm very comfortable with common application, office applications like Word, Excel, and DocuSign. I use those on a regular basis, and I'm confident I could pick up any additional platforms that the office uses. I actually have recently gotten some experience adapting to new systems within the city. I recently started volunteering at the Antioch Police Department. I had to learn their programs like RIMS and Peregrine, and I was able to get up to speed very quickly. I'd also really, I'd also really like to see the clerk's office take advantage of more advanced technology, since there are a lot of platforms out there that can make processes more efficient and streamlined. Thank you.
All right. What is the specific role of the city clerk under the Brown Act, the California Government Code, and the California Elections Code?
Thank you, mayor. The city clerk's role is really about making sure...
Excuse me, sir.
So my, is it my turn?
Excuse me, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to start again? I apologize.
Yeah, I apologize too.
That's okay. The city clerk's role is really about making sure government is transparent and accessible. Under the Brown Act, that means making sure the public has proper notice and access to meetings, and that city business is conducted openly. Under the Elections Code, it's about protecting the integrity of local elections and making sure the process is fair and accurate. Overall, the clerk is there to make sure the public can see and trust how their local government operates.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Rocha.
Okay, question number four. How will you balance outside interests, including other civic and community and political interests, with the work as a city clerk?
Thank you. I think the key is remembering that the city clerk has to remain neutral and professional at all times. The role is about serving the public and supporting transparency, not advancing personal or political interest. I'm very active in the community, and I value that involvement, but if I were serving as a city clerk, that responsibility would always come first. I would make sure that any outside activities never interfere with the work of the office or create even the appearance of a conflict of interest. The clerk's role is about trust, and I would practice, excuse me, I would protect that trust by keeping the job completely separate from any other civic or community involvement.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Singing and dancing, how are you?
Missing you talking about singing and dancing. I want to go back to question two in regards to computer systems.
Okay.
And the Fair, the FPPC in the Secretary of State's office, and your familiarity with NetFile.
Well, we have to do 700 forms and 410 forms, I've been doing it for 12 years, so actually 12 and a half, because I had to finish my forms this year. So it's a very, it's a hard process if you don't know what you're doing, but once you get used to it, and you save it, and you go back each time, it's super easy, it's super easy to teach. But you know what the really important part about that question is, Councilmember Wilson? Is the people at, where the forms are, the 700 and the 410, they're there up until like 10 o'clock at night, and they will walk you through it, they will help you make any changes that you need to make. Again, it's building those relationships with outside entities that help you do your job, or anybody else that's in politics that needs to fill out those forms.
And so you would have no problem, if you had a question, calling Secretary of State?
Oh, heck no, they offered hire me at one point. That was fun, sorry.
That was my fault, here's my actual question. What assurance can you provide that you will timely carry out the duties of the remainder of this term?
Thank you for that question. In my 12 years as a councilwoman, I'm proud to say I only missed a handful of meetings. That role was always a top priority for me, and if I'm chosen as city clerk, this role would be the same. I'm semi-retired, so I have the flexibility to adjust my schedule as needed, and you can be assured that I will be fully committed to carrying out the duties of the office in a timely and reliable way for the remainder of the term. Thank you.
All right. Any follow, Councilmember Torres Walker?
Yeah, going back to question four, you already answered it, but I'm gonna ask anyway because I asked everybody, but I think you answered it great.
Thank you.
Which is, how would you balance outside interests, including civic, community, and political interests, in your work as a city clerk? And how I explained it was, people might want to call on you to do something for them to further their own political interests. They might want you to do them a favor, or something like that. When you're in a position where people could get, you know, access to information to further their own interests, or use you as a tool, or ask you to apply for this position so that they can further their own political interests, how do you address those issues? And the interesting part is, when you answered Mayor Protem Rocha's question, you actually already answered that question, and you actually, you answered it way, you just answered it better than the people before you, so I want to thank you.
No, thank you for saying that, I appreciate that. Did I answer, I'm good?
You answered it.
I'm good.
And you answered it without me having to ask.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
There's one more, there's one more follow-up question. Did anybody ask you to apply for this job from anywhere? I mean, were you coerced?
Oh, hell no, excuse me, heck no.
Further people's political careers to be a tool?
No.
All right.
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We just want to be consistent with our questioning, thank you.
That was a question?
All right. One more, Monica, will you bring Mr. Terrell in, please? Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Terrell. We have five or so questions to ask you, so Councilmember Afretis will get started.
Okay.
Microphone, please.
So let me ask from... So let me ask, from your perspective, what do you see the role of city clerk being?
The city clerk really is someone that supports, that assists, that helps build. Of course, the obvious answer is, they are record keepers of the city. They make sure that all agendas, ordinances, and resolutions are, you know, filed accurately. But I think the clerk is really just about supporting and helping to build, not tear down, to assist and help and, and not hinder.
What about the legal responsibilities of the city clerk?
It's important. It's our civic, it's, it's legal and civic duty.
So you mentioned earlier that you're gainfully employed. How many hours do you think you could actually devote to, to this particular position? And when I say that, I mean actually coming into the office on a weekly basis.
On a weekly basis, uh, give or take about 20, about 20 or so. You know, my, me as a barber, it's pretty flexible, so I can kind of, you know, block my schedule off if I can, so that I can be available.
Thank you.
Councilmember Torres Walker.
Hi.
Hi.
Just to follow up to the role of the city clerk, so the city manager's office is the administrator of the city clerk's office. Although you would be either appointed in the role of city clerk, or elected to the role of city clerk, the city manager runs the day-to-day. How would you manage that relationship? How would you see the relationship working?
You know, I'm, I'm a very person, I'm a very personal person. I get, like I said, when I worked, still working as a barber, I've come across so many different demographic of people. And over the years, it has really tried and tested my, you know, my patience, and to be able to really meet people where they are. And of course, you know, I'm always asking questions, and I'm, of course, I'm willing to assist in whatever, whatever way possible.
Thank you. My next question is, what knowledge do you have of computer systems and electronic platforms that might be used in a city clerk position?
So like I said earlier, you know, I am knowledgeable about Microsoft Word. I do type 45 words a minute. I'm knowledgeable about Excel and Zoom, just, and that's about it, about Zoom, yeah.
All right, thank you. Next question's for me. What, what's your understanding of the city clerk's role as it relates to the Brown Act, the California Government Code, and the California Elections Code?
Well, like I just, you know, said, the city, the city clerk makes sure that agendas and notices are posted, you know, ahead of time within a required timely manner. They maintain the, you know, the municipal code. They also serves as, the city clerk serves as an elections official, so they manages, you know, candidate filings, ballot, ballot, ballot measures, and then of course, they coordinate with the Contra Costa County Registrar of Voters.
All right, thank you very much. Here for Tim.
How will you balance outside interests, including other civic, community, and political interests, with your role as a city clerk?
As a city clerk, my, I pretty much just, barbering itself is kind of just, it is what it is, but I'm able, I've, I've had, I've developed a relationship with my clients and my customers. So it's fairly easy to just block off, you know, like I said, my schedule, and to be available whenever I can.
So you think you'll be able to balance your, your work with city clerk roles and responsibilities, along with those community events that go on, you might be invited to?
Might be invited to, yeah. I mean, just like anything else, it's, there's challenges. There are always challenges. Anytime you step into something different, something new, but where there's challenges, there's growth. And so, like I said, I want to help assist and help build, and be, and be an asset and not a liability.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, I'm gonna have a follow-up question first, in regards to the computer systems of the city clerk's office. Are you familiar under the Fair Political Practices, the NetFile system?
I've heard of it, yeah, I've, I'm familiar a little bit. I haven't, you know, of course, used it, but I am aware and familiar.
A little bit familiar with it?
Yes, a little bit, yeah.
Okay. And you would know, you would have no problem of, of calling either the Secretary of State's office to get that information, or reaching out?
No, absolutely no, no problem whatsoever. I'll be able to do that, yeah.
Okay, so now to my actual question. What assurance can you provide that you will timely carry out the duties for the remainder of this term of this particular office?
I agree to really just put my best foot forward, and really prove to myself, not only myself, but to the city of Antioch, that, you know, I could be of service. Like, as being a barber, it, oh, you know, I've dealt with a lot of, lot of different demographics of people, some, you know, off the street, some, you know, inebriated, all kinds of things, from pastors to, to all kinds of people. And you learn over the years how to adjust, you learn how to meet people, like I said, where they are, and, you know, like I said, my customers, they wouldn't have any problems if I told them ahead of time, this is where I am, this is what I'm doing. We've developed that relationship over the years.
Councilmember Torres Walker.
Thank you. Oh, I just, I love the way you like followed up inebriated with pastors. I think it was just like.
I did, I'm sorry.
Got to keep it light. Back to question number four, how would the applicant balance outside interests, including civic, community, and political interests, with their work as a city clerk? And I know when you answered this initially, as it was asked by Mayor Protem, it was just about your schedule and your availability. I'm following up to ask about, when you're in a position like this, people might come to you for, for favors, I want to try to use your position to further themselves, right? And so, how would you, how would you address something like that if it happened to you in this position?
Well, any kind of, I'll say, argument, or, you know, some kind of uncomfortable thing, I've learned, you know, in church, I've learned that to meet people where they are, to not feed into, you know, whatever attitude they might have, but always be respectful, to really follow up, be like, you know, genuinely, I'm, that's your issue, but let's respect one another, let's understand what it is. And it's just about respecting, having those, those boundaries, but not feeding into, and just meeting, meeting the situation where it is, and just, from person to person, just showing that respect.
And for consistency, no one asks you to apply to be appointed to this position to use you as a tool to further their own political interests?
I'm, repeat that again?
No one asked you.
Right.
To apply for this position, so that they could use you to further their own political interests.
No.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Terrell. Monica, if you could go ahead and bring the rest of the candidates in, please? And once they're back in, well, yeah, thank you very much. Once, once the, the other four candidates are in, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comments. If you haven't yet, if you could fill out a speaker card, please, and turn it into the city clerk, and we will go ahead and, and do public comment, and then council will deliberate on the five candidates. For those of you who are here for our seven o'clock regular meeting, we're finishing up a process of hopefully appointing our next city clerk. Our prior city clerk resigned several months ago, and so we have a term that goes until November of '26 at the next election, and so one of these candidates, we're hoping, will be our next city clerk. And here they all come. All right, welcome back, everybody. So we're gonna open this up to public comment now? That's general public com, any, any public comment on this item from the audience? Okay, yes. Mr. Becker.
Thank you. So as a community member, my appreciation to all of the applicants and the time that they've taken for the city and our community. You know, listening to some of the questions and seeing some of the questions from council, you know, I think that for a city to operate in the right way, to be compliant, which I think a lot of council members and staff and community are emphasizing, that's important for our applicants to understand what that takes, what that means, and what their responsibilities are. You know, I, I hear questions on these platforms, and these networks, and these systems that government utilize, and how would you operate these systems, and how would you integrate with these systems? And in California, there are a lot of laws, there's a lot of processes that are changing, but these are elected positions. These are community members that step up and fulfill these duties. So there's a responsibility from the government to educate the community on what the process is, what those platforms are, how they support the community, and what your responsibility as an elected official is. And what I'm driving at is, when you look at the city clerk's office, or a lot of these front-facing, front-facing offices, whether elected or staff here in our city, I, we, I find, we find that the city of Antioch is severely lacking. And I'm frustrated because here we have a city clerk's office that has to deal with public records requests. And we understand that here in Antioch, public records requests are only an online system through our police department, not through city clerk's office. We hear about the FPA and their requirements, right, and NetFile, right, which is an enterprise platform. And SB 272 that was passed in October of 2015 says that a city has a responsibility to create an enterprise platform that specifically shows what systems you as a city are operating. Contra Costa County's enterprise platform was updated in July of 2024 and has over 300 systems. Antioch's catalog has 10 systems on there, NetFile not one of them, C Click Fix not one of them, Civic Plus, Next Request not one of them. And you have an annual required, requirement to update that catalog. We updated in 2016, the year after that was passed. We missed nine opportunities.
Thank you. Yes, it's a case.
I just wanted to share my experience about Lori Ogerchak when she was elected for her position at city council, as a city council member. Whenever I emailed, texted, called her about something I was concerned about, she always got back to me. Not one time did she not get back to me in all the years that she served. And I think that's a great quality having a city clerk, is responsiveness, because sometimes when you email and text, not everyone gets back to you, and that creates frustration. So just want to share my experience, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we will go to council deliberation. Before we do, Mr. City Attorney, do you have any further direction for us as far as where we're headed, what we need to do?
No, you've, this is now before you. So, you know, the, a motion to approve somebody with a second and a majority vote is what is needed to approve a candidate.
All right, thank you. So do we have any lady that would like to make any comments, or start a discussion, or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank all five members, you know, of the, the community who stepped forward. It's, it's, if you're not used to it, it is unnerving to come up and speak. But on behalf, I think, of the entire community, we have outstanding candidates. Unfortunately, only one person will be chosen, but I want each and every one of you to know, from my perspective, I'm sure for the city council, that we really truly appreciate your stepping forward. We hope, even if you don't get chosen, that this will not be the last time we see you. We have boards and commissions and other activities that frankly, we need the involvement of all of our community members. And so I want to thank you for, for stepping forward, putting yourself on the firing line, so to speak, and making yourself available for this particular appointment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, council?
I was just gonna echo Councilmember Freitas's comments, and because this is a one-year appointment, should you not be selected this evening, obviously there will be an election in a year, and the door will be wide open, because this is a temporary position to fill until November of 2026. And again, I want to commend each of you for stepping up and being willing to help serve our community in this role of city clerk.
All right, thank you. With all of that being said, does anybody want to make a motion?
Well, it's, it's difficult to do, because I think there were some really good candidates. I, based on experience and what I wrote down and the information on this particular position, I would, I'd like to make a, a motion to recommend Lori Ogerchak for the position of city clerk as a, to complete the term.
All right, so we have a motion for Lori Ogerchak, do we have a second? I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion fails with three council members abstaining.
All right, so do we have another motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Freitas.
I would like to move for the appointment, Mr. Michael Mandy.
All right, we have a first motion from Mr. Mandy.
I'll second.
The motion is second, please cast your votes.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion passes with four ayes, and Mayor Protem Rocha voting no.
All right.
Just for the sake of the record, there, there is a, essentially the vote was to approve a resolution with the candidate's name, and that will be entered as part of your official record. And you are free at this time, if, 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 Mayor, if you want to swear in the city clerk, you could do that now, or you can do that before our next meeting, whatever you prefer.
I'd like, well, 7:12, I'd like to do it right now, if we could, and, and I think it'd be great to do it while we're all here. So, do, do we have the oath of office for me?
You ready to get to work? Congratulations.
Yeah, Mr. Mandy, if you'd like to, you'd like to say a few words before we take the oath to office?
Thank you very much. I hope to make you proud for your selection. I appreciate it very much. Thank you very much. I hope you, this is very emotional, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. We'll stay, stay right there, I'm gonna come down and administer the oath to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, his wife might want to join him. This is going to be the last time she sees him.
Aurora, hi Aurora, nice to meet you. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael J. Mandy.
I, Michael J. Mandy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties which I am about to enter.
As Antioch city clerk.
As Antioch city clerk.
Congratulations.
Thank you. He's got a phone?
I have two, so I'll, I'll share it with you.
Would you like to, like to sign that, please?
Thank you.
I'm acting as a city clerk right now until he signs this, so.
My hands shaking.
All right, so that is, am I going to take a motion? Hold on a second. Yeah, yeah. Do, oh, do I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So moved, second.
We have a motion, second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember Freitas noted absent from the, the dais at 7:16 PM.
All right, so we are going to take a five-minute break between this meeting and the regular meeting, and then we'll get started at about 7:22 or so. All right, so that is, am I going to take a motion? Hold on a second. Yeah, yeah. Do, oh, do I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So moved, second.
We have a motion, second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember Freitas noted absent from the, the dais at 7:16 PM.
All right, so we are going to take a five-minute break between this meeting and the regular meeting, and then we'll get started at about 7:22 or so. All right, so that is, am I going to take a motion? Hold on a second. Yeah, yeah. Do, oh, do I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So moved, second.
We have a motion, second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember Freitas noted absent from the, the dais at 7:16 PM. All right, so we are going to take a five-minute break between this meeting and the regular meeting, and then we'll get started at about 7:22 or so. If you wish to provide a written public comment, you may email the city clerk's department at cityclerk@antiochca.gov by 3:00 PM, the day of the city council's meeting.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, or Mr. Clerk, what, who are speakers?
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and members of the community. My name is Sophia Kleeman-Mendoza, and I'm the new district field representative for Assemblymember Anna Marie Avila-Farias, who is honored to serve District Assembly 15. I'm eager to get to know each of you and foster a strong collaborative relationship between the Assemblymember's office and your City Council Board. As your point of contact, I am here to serve as an ambassador for the Assemblymember whenever she is unavailable to contact directly. I look forward to working alongside you on community projects and coordinating future meetings with her. I'm also pleased to share that our district office has officially moved to a new location downtown Concord, across from Toda Los Santos Park. We'll be hosting a New Year's grand opening, and invitations will follow shortly. With the state legislator now recessed following the conclusion of the 2025 session, Assemblymember Avila-Farias will be spending more time in the district and is eager to connect directly with constituents, and we're very excited to invite the community to several upcoming events, as well as you all. First, we'll have the Tadara de Antonio, and that will be held Friday, October 24th, from 3:00 to 7:00, and we'll be giving away free pumpkins. We'll also have a Thanksgiving turkey giveaway, where we'll be giving away Thanksgiving meals. That'll also be at our district office in Concord, Thursday, November 13th, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. And then a Young Ladies Empowerment Tea, that'll be held here in Antioch, that'll be Saturday, December 13th, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. A stocking stuffing community event, also at our district office in Concord, that'll be held Friday, December 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And lastly, a toy drive giveaway at our district office, also still in Concord, Thursday, December 17th. Also, keep out on our newsletters, or sign up on our website, and you'll have more information on that shortly. And we welcome your partnership and community participation in these family-friendly gatherings, which celebrate the season, support our neighbors in need, and engage our community in activities that reflect the unique spirit of community and our district. Thank you for allowing us to share these updates, and we look forward to seeing many of you all at these events. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia.
Can we please have Ralph Hernandez? Unagendized comments are provided until no later than 7:30 PM when the city council moves on to agenda items. There is another opportunity for public comments at the end of the meeting. If you wish to speak either during public comments or during an agenda item, fill out a speaker request form located at the entrance of the council chambers. Please place the speaker request form in the tray near the city clerk before the council meeting begins. This will enable us to call upon you to speak. It is very important, the speaker request form is retained as a public record and as such may be shared with others upon request in line with the California Public Records Act. On your speaker request form, please identify if the comment is for announcement of community events, public comment, or a specific agenda item. No one may speak more than once on an agenda item during these public comments. Speakers will be notified shortly before they are called to speak. When you are called to speak, please limit your comments to the time allotted, up to three minutes at the discretion of the mayor. The consent calendar is a group of items which are determined to be routine. These items are usually considered all at once and approved without further discussion. If you are opposed to action which is recommended for an item on the consent calendar, please submit a speaker request form before the meeting and place in the speaker card tray near the city clerk. This will enable the item to be removed from the consent calendar and call upon you to speak. If the meeting appears to be going late, the city council may decide to continue some items until a subsequent meeting. The city council will try to make this determination around 10 o'clock PM. It is the goal to stop discussing agenda items by not later than 11 o'clock PM. If you wish to provide a written public comment, you may email the city clerk's department at cityclerk@antiochca.gov by 3 o'clock PM the day of the city council's meeting.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk or Mr. Clerk, what are speakers? All right, thank you.
We have two speakers. Sofia Kleeman-Mendoza, representing Assembly Member Avila Farias.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and members of the community. My name is Sofia Kleeman-Mendoza, and I'm the new District Field Representative for Assembly Member Anna Marie Avila Farias, who is honored to serve District Assembly 15. I'm eager to get to know each of you and foster a strong collaborative relationship between the Assembly Member's office and your City Council Board. As your point of contact, I am here to serve as an ambassador for the Assembly Member whenever she is unavailable to contact directly. I look forward to working alongside you on community projects and coordinating future meetings with her. I'm also pleased to share that our district office has officially moved to a new location downtown Concord, across from Toda Los Santos Park. We'll be hosting a New Year's grand opening and invitations will follow shortly. With the state legislator now recessed following the conclusion of the 2025 session, Assembly Member Avila Farias will be spending more time in the district and is eager to connect directly with constituents, and we're very excited to invite the community to several upcoming events, as well as you all. First, we'll have the Tadara de Antonio, and that will be held Friday, October 24th, from 3 to 7, and we'll be giving away free pumpkins. We'll also have a Thanksgiving turkey giveaway where we'll be giving away Thanksgiving meals that'll also be at our district office in Concord, Thursday, November 13th, from 3 to 7 PM. And then a young ladies empowerment tea that'll be held here in Antioch, that'll be Saturday, December 13th, 11 AM to 2 PM. A stocking stuffing community event, also at our district office in Concord, that'll be held Friday, December 12th, from 6 to 8 PM. And lastly, a toy drive giveaway at our district office, also still in Concord, Thursday, December 17th. Also, keep out on our newsletters or sign up on our website and you'll have more information on that shortly. And we welcome your partnership and community participation in these family-friendly gatherings, which celebrate the season, support our neighbors in need, and engage our community in activities that reflect the unique spirit of community and our district. Thank you for allowing us to share these updates, and we look forward to seeing many of you all at these events. Thank you.
Thank you, Sofia.
Can we please have Ralph Hernandez?
Hello. Ralph Hernandez. Two weeks ago, I came here, I introduced this to you. Antioch is unsafe and it is dangerous, not just to our community, but even to our police personnel. And those decision-makers for the last 30 years, in my opinion, really don't give a shit. We have increased crime.
Mr. Hernandez.
Profanity should not be used when you're addressing the council. Would you please read crime?
It's in the dictionary, you know that.
I haven't seen it.
Crime has increased because of our leaders doing nothing for over 30 years, and that's why we have reduced force. You can't expect our police force to do a proper job fighting crime with what is handed out decade after decade after decade. It's dangerous to them, too. It's not fair. The other thing is, you know, there's an adopted general plan. If you look at Section 3, it tells you what you are supposed to do, and that is maintain a police force. If you look at Section 3.531, it specifically outlines you're supposed to have 1.2 officers to 1.5 sworn officers per thousand population. What you currently have is seven tenths of an officer serving our community. Holy unfair, holy, you're not abiding by the general plan, and it's not just you guys, okay? It's all of the leaders for the last 30 years. Now, it also talks about the police objectives to serve our community. You know, you guys come up with all the, and I say you guys, but in the last decades, our leaders. You come up with all of these little pet projects and you talk about a park, a little kiddie park, and they are not going to go out patrol and provide safety to our community or even safety to our officers. You guys got to get off what you're on and you have to start concentrating on getting back public safety for our community, as well as your public officers. Safety is what we need, you know? You guys were elected, you guys ran, I read Monica's campaign flyer, she talked about she supports public safety. Well, I haven't heard anything from you, Monica, to put it on the agenda of how to correct our lax personnel.
Thank you.
Can we please have Crystal Law?
Hello. I just wanted to take this time to say thank you. For one, Tamisha, you know I love you. I just, every time I have a problem or an issue, you take care of it. They're getting the park together. They got all the, on Sycamore, when you drive down, it was a whole bunch of weeds and just junk last time, and I, even if you didn't do it, I still asked you to take care of it and it still got done. I'm like, it was horrible. So I just, I really, because we feel left out sometimes, you know? We're over on Sycamore, so y'all make us feel left out. We see all the tree people coming over here on Hillcrest, but we get left out with the junk, you know? And then they're opening up the park hopefully soon, cross fingers. They've been working on it, we've kind of been going in the gate anyway, but it's beautiful, so I can't wait to actually have it open. I also want to, for once, appreciate Mr. V. Hill, because you guys, we interact with the police every day where I'm at, and when you have interactions with them, you're expecting them to come at you kind of crazy because of how we've had our police force prior, how it was before. So we expect them to not really know how to handle situations, and we're expecting them to mess up. We're expecting them to come at situations wrong because of what happened. But I've seen multiple situations go down and each situation was handled very properly from the police department. They even took time. I was mad. I was literally yelling at the officer because I didn't understand why they were sending the, you know, the little drone thing instead of just coming over and helping everybody out. They sent the drone first and it made me upset. So I started hollering at them, like, why didn't you guys just come over? Why did you guys send the drone first? Like, I was really hurt. And he took the time to come over and explain it to me. So it's like, we are really dealing with different people, and I really just want us to be able to give them a chance until they mess up, you know what I mean? Like, let's just give them a chance. So I just wanted to say thank you. This wasn't a, you know, telling you guys what to do, but I just wanted to appreciate because I do see the changes and I'm right there in the middle of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have no more speaker cards for public comments? Next?
I see Mr. Becker over there with his hand raised.
Thank you. For our new city clerk, cities councils can request public speaker request cards, but Brown Act protects the opportunity to just participate in that meeting during that public comment session, so I'm exercising that right. I just wanted to bring forward some information for council and the community that is a bit concerning to me. I just learned of the Mini Bay Tots preschool on Sommersville Road, the use permit that was approved a couple of months ago, I believe, here in the city of Antioch for a preschool center, age ranges preschool to 12 years old. I was a bit confused because that property that that daycare center is going into is 112 feet away from the existing cannabis facility on Sommersville Road at 2615 Sommersville. And I was confused because, I was confused because our ordinance states that there's a 600-foot buffer between special uses and cannabis. So I reached out to city staff for clarity. So I reached out to city staff for clarity, and I was told that if there is an existing special use here in the city, then a cannabis facility cannot come within 600 feet of that facility. If there is... Can I take my time? I'll take the rest of my minute and a half at the end of the meeting, please, if possible. Would that be allowed?
Are you being distracted by?
I am being distracted, yes.
Could the clerk's desk please not talk and give Mr. Becker 30 more seconds on his clock?
Thank you, I appreciate it, I apologize. And so I learned that the cannabis facility cannot come in when there is an existing use, but that special use can come in if the cannabis is there. And I'm confused because the intent of that buffer zone is to separate the special uses. So now we have preschoolers up to age 12 that are directly next door to a cannabis on Sommersville Road, and I'm talking about the old Payless building and the old Fast Auto Loans building that's right next door. So I'm hoping that city council, because city staff has to abide by that ordinance, I'm hoping that city council can look at that ordinance because it also includes residential uses, and the Radix Growth Facility that's in the old Kmart is 250 feet across from the 400 units that were built, the family apartments. And I learned that the city of Antioch requested a variance to that ordinance to allow that use. So I'm wondering why we would create an ordinance and then request a variance so that these families could be directly across the street from cannabis. And I want to emphasize that I'm not here stating that cannabis shouldn't be in our city, I'm just asking for clarity on that ordinance. Also, I will finish with saying Tower Zone vape that's on Sunset Boulevard, I've heard is selling vape to underage kids and is 700 feet away from Bidwell when that requirement is 1,000 feet. That's for code enforcement, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. Announcements of civic and community events? Yes?
So I have two, one of them, I'm helping the city out a little bit. De La Sfuerza celebrations coming back again this year. They have a offer for small businesses that can advertise in three different levels that if you guys want some of this to put up there, it was a really big event last year, to reach out, and we'll make sure we get it. We got it from the Aztec dancers tonight, they asked us to come and say it here because it benefits them a lot as well. Also, Saturday, the 27th, is the sixth annual taco competition at the Antioch Fairgrounds and Classic Car Show. There's still, you can still enter the day of for $40, and if you want to come as just, you know, a regular person without a car or a taco, it's $10 to come in and kids under a certain age are free. 12? 12. So those are the events.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other announcements of civic and community events? Yes?
George Wordlaw.
Evening, Mayor, council members and fellow residents of Antioch. My name is George Wordlaw III. I'm senior pastor for Faith City Church, and I want to take this opportunity to share an event that we are having for the city of Antioch. It is the Health Fair, our annual Health Fair. It's going to be happening on October 4th, 2025, at the Antioch Community Center. This Health Fair is designed to serve our community by bringing together local medical professionals, nonprofits, and service providers to offer free screenings, wellness, information, and resources that promote healthier living. We'll have blood pressure checks, mental health resources, children activities, and practical education on nutrition and fitness. Our vision is simple, we want to strengthen Antioch by strengthening families, individuals with access to care, knowledge, and hope. We believe that good health empowers people to thrive in every area of their lives. The event begins at 4:00 PM, and vendor setup starts a little earlier than that. Admission is free, and we encourage everyone, families, seniors, young people, to come out and take advantage of the resources and connect with the community. Be partakers of what we are giving and what we are serving. I want to personally invite you and your families and your networks to join us together because I believe we can make Antioch not just a place where we live, but a place where we thrive in body, mind, and spirit. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing you, hopefully, at the For Faith City Church Antioch Health Fair.
And what time is that?
It's at 4:00 PM.
4:00 PM, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have Tom Hartrick?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, and community members. I am here tonight, and I'm hoping my wife can pass out a flyer. Is that okay? She passes out a flyer to everybody up on the dais or over to the clerk? We have the Leo Fontana Youth Foundation has a fundraiser coming up in November. This is our only fundraiser. What we do with our money is we provide scholarships for the three high schools in Antioch. We also provide middle school sports, we provide swimming activities, drama activities, and many other things where we give away all the money that we make. This trivia night is set up of teams of eight. Some of you have been to this before. It is a lot of fun, except for the losers. The winning team gets to come next year for free, and they get to have the Leo trophy. Leo himself was a huge supporter of youth and sports and activities to give kids something to do during the day. During our trivia night, we will ask questions. You might ask what some of those questions are. If you can respond, either raise your hand or blurt it out. Do you know what Taylor Swift's album is her best-selling album? Very simple trivia questions, right? Any takers? Nope. Does anybody know what day in year Disneyland opened? Just an idea of some of the simple questions. There's...
1955, I know that.
Got a year.
No, 55, July?
That's a month.
Yeah, I don't know the date.
Now, the good news at this trivia contest, you're at a table of eight, you get to talk amongst yourself, you don't want to blurt out the answer because another table might hear you. And then, here's a fun one. What is the...
What was the answer?
You don't get to hear the answer until we're done with all the questions, Mr. Freitas, I'm sorry. We'll have a double jeopardy round where you can buy an answer later. What is the tallest mountain from base to peak on planet Earth?
It's one of the Hawaiian islands. I don't know which one.
Well, it's not an island, it's a mountain.
It's one of the Hawaiian mountains.
Nepal.
You mean Mount Everest?
No, what's the other one?
Kilimanjaro?
K2.
K2, that one's in Switzerland. We're doing good.
That's why, that's why I never win this award. I play every year.
So I'm almost out of time. So Taylor Swift's number one selling album, 1989, 14.7 million. Disneyland was July 17th, 1955, and the tallest mountain is Molokai.
All right.
Please sign up at Lone Tree Golf.
Molokai, Hawaii, Molokai. Yeah, we definitely will not have a city council team. All right, any other announcements of civic and community events? All right, seeing none. We will move on to announcements of board and commission openings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Antioch invites residents to get involved in their community by serving on one of our boards, commissions, or committees. We are currently accepting applications for the following vacancies. One partial-term seat on the Antioch Police Oversight Commission, two full-term and one alternate seat on the Board of Administrative Appeals, and three full-term seats on the Planning Commission. The deadline to apply for all positions is 5:00 PM on September 26th, 2025. Applications are available tonight in the hallway, on the city's website, or can be picked up in the city clerk's office. We encourage all interested residents to apply and help shape the future of Antioch.
Thank you very much. Now on to council committee reports and communications. Councilmember Freitas.
No report.
All right, Councilmember Torres Walker.
Oh, man. I can't, so much has happened, I can't remember. I'm assuming we were supposed to have a CDBG meeting, but I think it got canceled and rescheduled. That happens a lot in this city. I did have an opportunity to join the National Convention for Offices of Violence Prevention with staff from the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources in St. Louis. It was an amazing experience for, I believe, it's 47 different municipalities and cities throughout the country who are implementing community-based initiatives focused on violence, prevention, intervention, and response. We learned a lot to be able to bring back to the city with the hopes that we are approved for our next round of state funding to continue our work around violence prevention and intervention, and I believe there is a regional meeting that will be coming up next. And I believe there is a regional meeting that will be coming up next month here in this region to talk to all of the other departments of public safety and community, you know, departments that are focused on violence prevention and intervention across the region and share information and resources. One of the reasons why I'm excited about the regional meeting is because there are deep conversations happening right now in the East Bay about the regional shifts in violence and how cities have not historically had conversations with each other between Oakland, Antioch, Stockton, San Francisco, Vallejo. Those conversations are happening now and I'm happy that Antioch is at the table. So I'm looking forward to that meeting as well. I was appointed to a lot of stuff while I was gone by my fellow council... by my fellow council members. And I guess that's what happens when you miss a meeting. So I'm sure I'll have a lot to report on because the city manager has informed me that I have a lot coming up. Yeah, so, thanks, city council.
You're welcome. Yeah, you know what they say, if you don't show up for dinner, you're on the menu. So that's what happened there. Councilmember Wilson, please.
Yes, so last week, Delta Diablo met after our summer break. The big thing we went over was the strategic initiatives for our strategic plan. A couple of high points is where a lot of investment has been made as far as technology with making sure the plant runs better, that we get, that we take the, we get clean water back to you. But there's going to be a lot of systems update and technology. Also, a big thing that the organization is doing is more community engagement. I think people think, when they think Delta Diablo, you know, that's where my water from my toilet goes. But there's so much more to the plant. So there's going to be way more community engagement and getting out to the community. So that was like, there's a bunch of things that we went over, but those were the two big things. I know we participated in the Big Truck event. I was looking for Brad or... Delta Diablo, yes, was at the Big Truck event. So hopefully, people got to see some of the equipment that Delta Diablo uses. Also, this past Saturday, District 4 had a community meeting at, with East Bay Regional Parks at the old Roddy Ranch Golf Course. If you guys don't know, East Bay Regional Park acquired that land and is now converting it into a park with an education center on there, creating trails that are going to be very walkable for families. A lot of people also don't know, they also acquired Mr. Roddy's home, which is in that valley, Deer, the actual Deer Valley. So we got to hike up to that ridge and look down into that valley. But it's very well attended. A lot of people were curious about the transformation of that golf course. And it's looking like, the city manager was there. It's looking like it's going to be open to public in about a year and a half to two years. So thank you for everybody who came. It was a great turnout, a lot of fun. Everybody got their steps in that day.
All right, Mayor Protem Rocha.
Well, our standing committees that I'm on are meeting later in this week. So nothing to report there. But there are a couple of community events I wanted to share. The Antioch Women's Club on G Street is having a Veterans Memorial event on Sunday. I believe it's at 7:00. I'm not sure if it's at 7:00, but I know it's supposed to be around 7:00 or 6:30 when the sun goes down. And they honor the memory of veteran, fallen veterans who are from our community and they do this annually at the Antioch Women's Club. So if anybody would like to come down and join them, it's open to the community and to the public. It's a nice way of honoring our families who served our country and have passed. That'll be Sunday this evening. And then the following Saturday on, it's Saturday, October 4th, the Antioch Sports Legends, which is part of the museum, has a downstairs historical museum Hall of Fame. They're having their annual gala. And it's a dinner at Lone Tree Golf Event Center on Saturday, October 5th. It's a wonderful event. They induct 15 new inductees into the Hall of Fame who have done outstanding in athletics, either at Drew Valley High School or Antioch High School. And so I know that I'll be there and a couple of the other members will be there as well. And it's a wonderful way to celebrate our community. So I just want to share those two events.
All right, thank you. I attended the Contra Costa Transportation Authority Board Meeting last week. One of the items of interest was an East Contra Costa County Automated Transit Network, which is the small four-people vehicles, about five feet wide, that are going to transport folks from the Pittsburgh, or the Pittsburgh-Baypoint BART Station, all weaving throughout Pittsburgh, Antioch, Oakley, Brentwood, down to the south side of Brentwood. And so it's a $300 million-plus project. But it will start, the plan is to start from Streets of Brentwood and connect folks to the BART Station in Antioch. So that's the first phase of it. So that's in the planning stages. It operates on about a 10-foot-wide piece of pavement or concrete. And so they're just looking at options for that right now. And so that's kind of the wave of the future. It's not intended to replace transit, but to supplement it and give people more options and ultimately, hopefully, keep them out of their vehicles so they don't have to get in their cars at all, but they can get from their home to wherever they're going, apart from getting in their vehicles. So that was interesting. Also, this last Saturday, did a meet and greet or a community forum out at the Blue Rock Starbucks, had about 50 folks show up to that, which was really good. And those are just intended for folks, I give a little update on what's going on from my perspective, and then it's wide open for folks to ask me any questions they want to. So that's always interesting and it's a good way to stay connected with the community. So we'll be having more of those. Just as far as Mayor's comments are concerned, again, I just want to thank everybody who came out and threw their hat in the ring for the city clerk position. As Councilmember Freitas said, that's really tough to get up there and do, get up in front of folks and put yourself out there. And I just want to encourage those folks who didn't, who weren't chosen and also anybody else who'd like to be on one of our boards or commissions. It's a great opportunity to get a chance to see how the city is operated. These are really important, whether it's Board of Administrative Appeals or Parks and Recreation Commission, Antioch Police Oversight Commission. We have three vacancies on the Planning Commission right now. So if you're interested in something like that, please, please apply for that. And we'd love to interview you and see if you might be the right person, right person to fill that role. Let's go ahead and keep moving on with the meeting. Consent calendar, does anybody have any items they would like to pull from the consent calendar on the council? No, none, any from the public?
Mr. Becker would like to pull item H.
Okay, item H. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar except for item H?
Move approval except item H.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar except for item H. Please cast your votes.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion passes 5-0 with the exception of item H.
All right, thank you. Mr. Becker, would you like to come on up and let us know what you're interested in with item H, please?
I would, but I think more appropriately, I would like to know what you all are interested with item H. Specifically, that tentative map on the 220 units north of Sand Creek Road. That's 220 single-family homes that are going to sell at probably a minimum of $700,000. So we're talking about maybe $170 million in home sales here in the city of Antioch. And I would like to know, per that developer agreement, the developer is requesting an extension, or, and I'm sorry, the developer is requesting an agreement because they are looking for approval on their final map. And for approval on their final map, per their developer agreement, they have to have those infrastructure improvements in place. And they do not. So they, per the agreement, it says if you do not, you have to enter into a developer agreement with the city of Antioch. That developer agreement then stipulates that they have to announce in writing within 24 hours of when they're going to commence work. And then there is a 24-month requirement to finish that work unless, once again, council approves an agreement for an extension. My question is, are those surety bonds in place with the city? What are the timelines for that work? In staff report, it says that there should be a 24-hour notice for work that has commenced. If you drive out to the site, there is work that has commenced. So why is that 24-hour notice from the developer within that agreement? And why isn't there an expected timeline for when those infrastructure improvements will be in place? Because as we all know, costs for business continue to rise. Inflation drives costs. And so what is going to be the final burden on the city of Antioch for those costs? What is going to come into the CFD there? Where are those surety bonds at? I mean, why has it not said within that agreement that the surety bonds have been paid to the city of Antioch? And the developer, TriPoint Homes, has commenced work? Why would we have before you an agreement for a developer extension so that they can get a final map approved? Interestingly enough, another question is, it doesn't say that they were vested in that map, but it was a tentative map drawn. So are they vested? Because per your last conversations with inclusionary housing, unless they're vested, then that project could potentially be bound to inclusionary housing. And so are they doing this to try to get ahead of that inclusionary housing? And what is the expected date of those improvements? And then finally, considering it's $170 million homes, or $170 million, 220 homes, why was this a consent calendar item? Why wasn't this put before you for discussion? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Becker. Any other, any other public comments on that item?
Mayor, we do not have any other speaker forms.
All right, thank you. So through the city manager, a couple of questions just related to develop, or actually, it's a subdivision improvement agreement. I believe it's not a development agreement. But I guess the question would be, are all the bonds and everything in place? Which I presume they are, because they usually are, but just a question of clarification.
Is this like for a question for me personally?
Well, I mean, through you, if you'd like to have your...
I'm going to call up the directors right here.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yeah, the surety bonds are in place. This is to protect us so that the bonds are in place, they're able to work and have those in place while they're trying to get the final map. So it does protect us so that the improvements do get done within the next couple of years.
All right, thank you.
Has work begun?
There is work out there. They are doing mass grading in the area, yes.
So they've already posted the bonds?
The bonds have been posted, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, are there any questions from council? Can I get a motion to approve item, consent calendar item number H?
Move approval.
A motion?
I'll second.
A motion second, please cast your votes.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember Torres Walker abstaining.
All right, thank you. Moving on to public hearing. Item number three, review of the fiscal year 2024-25 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. CAPR?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. It's recommended that the City Council receive and accept the CAPR report and any public comments. The CAPR details the individual goals and achievements of funded agencies during the fiscal year, the final year of the 2025, 2020 to 2025 Consolidated Plan, as well as including an analysis of achievements over the five years of the plan. In certain areas, homeless goals and strategies is an area, prevention of homelessness, general public services, non-homeless special needs, youth, fair housing, landlord-tenant counseling, economic development, administration, and affordable housing goals and strategies. A summary of the priorities and annual strategies that received funding in fiscal year 2024 and 2025 is provided in front of you. I just want to remind you that the essential products and programs are being done in a very challenging time in terms of budget and changing funding landscapes. So it's important to be aware that the city has committed to providing specific housing-related programs as a means of achieving stated objectives over the next five to seven years in the following documents that the city signed. State Certified Housing Element is the first one. The second one is the MTC ABAG Transit Oriented Communities Plan. The third one is the PLHA 2025, 2020 to 2025 Plan and the 2025 to 2030 Consolidated Plan. So these essential housing projects and programs are fair housing services, landlord-tenant services, tenant protections and enforcement through the Antioch Renter Program, rental assistance and rapid rehousing, tenant legal assistance, housing rehabilitation for lower-income homeowners, the Antioch Home Ownership Program, the Accessory Dwelling Unit Accelerator Program, new construction of lower-income housing with an investment of $3 million and homeless assistance. And so Montserrat Cabal is here if you have any questions. Terry House is usually on this, but she is under the weather tonight.
All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open that right now. Do we have an opponent or a proponent for this project or for this item?
We have not received a card for item three.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item? We have public comment? Okay, please.
So I read this report in detail and I've spoken about this before at the CBDG HIJK meeting. So my comment is specifically addressing AH31 on the report. And I've been a Realtor long enough that I'm not going to tell you because then you can probably guess my age. But I've helped countless people secure loans and I've served as the ringmaster for all this real estate stuff. I want to again, share my ideas about how AHOPE could actually benefit Antioch and low-income home buyers. And I requested to the CDBG, but I was told I could only get three minutes because I can't present a presentation. And three minutes is hardly enough time for me to breathe sometimes. So I want to present like a possible workable solution to AHOPE because it's reported that there was challenges on that report. And I've actually discussed this with Terry House as well. And no one has ever told me it could not be done. So I want to, I would like people to explore some of the possibilities. So Terry, the report said low credit scores is one reason that AHOPE is not successful. And that is a, that is a challenge and credit scores can be improved. So I'm wondering why not allocate some of the underutilized AHOPE funds for actual credit counseling? There's plenty of third-party where people can get reimbursed for participating in credit counseling to get their credit scores up. The second part is unwarranted loans they talked about. So the problem with condos, because those are mostly low-income, and let's just talk about the Sycamore area. There's a lot of investors over there. And so that makes that condo project unwarranted, meaning no lender's going to loan on it without a significant amount of money down, like up to 30% to 40%. So because we've only had one loan and it hasn't closed yet for AHOPE, you can actually, maybe, if it allows, because I don't know, no one told me it hasn't, use AHOPE funds to help people get that 40% down. And that, to me, that creates a win-win situation for low-income home buyers. They're getting the 40% down. Now they can get an unwarranted loan to purchase a property off of Sycamore. You increase owner occupancy in the Sycamore corridor. And when you have more, a higher owner occupancy level, that area is going to see improvement. And low-income buyers are going to gain wealth through home ownership. So that's my thing. Another problem with AHOPE and why Realtors don't use it is because it takes 45 to 60 days to actually close a loan using AHOPE. And when you're in a seller's market, that will automatically not get your offer accepted. In this market, it might, but not typically. So the process needs to be streamlined. And mostly, like CalHFA, which is another down payment system program, they can do it in 21 days, sometimes less. So I think if we're serious about helping people get home ownership and improving the Sycamore corridor, this option should be explored at least. Because I don't know the legalities or anything. I just know you need 40% down for an unwarranted condo to buy. And I think that would help that area and improve that area for... And I think that would help that area and improve that area for people even renting there. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Andrew Becker.
All right, Mr. Becker.
Thank you. So my comments specifically are on the permanent local housing allocation program. For city council and for staff, I'm looking for a bit of clarity on what PLH dollars we are pursuing, what those plans are specifically going forward. Also a report out on have we left any formula grant dollars on the table? In '23, when I looked at the HCD PLHA formula grant table, Antioch was one of the cities that was listed as in potential, having a potential for loss of our 2020 cycle formula grants. Also, when I looked at the 2024 formula grant table, the city of Antioch was not even listed on that table for formula grants that have been pursued. So understanding that PLHA comes to the state of California, it goes out in both an entitled and non-entitled formula grant process, as well as allocations directed out to the city for an action plan submittal that can be amended. If those dollars are left on the table, then they revert into the state of California's multifamily housing program. And then they go out to the rest of California. And cities across the board don't understand what these dollars are or what they can do fully for the city. I'll tell you, when I reached out to the Director of Public Works, who also manages community development for the city of Rio Vista, and I said, "Did you know you have PLH dollars that you've been historically leaving on the table?" Their response was, "What's PLHA?" And for the city of Rio Vista, that was $450,000. That's significant. And in fiscal year 2020, for us, PLHA, that was $661,000 in formula grant dollars that could have come to the city. And so I'd like to get an understanding of what has come to the city, what our action plan going forward is, what the outcomes of the 2020 to 2025 action plan specifically were. And most importantly, I would like to see this city reach out to other entitled and non-entitled cities in the region, considering we're talking about regional approaches to homelessness and housing, and figure out how we can work together to bundle those PLHA dollars and use them as a regional funding source for these programs. So that when we look at Home Key or Measure X, or Multifamily Supernova, or the Joe Serna Farm Workers Program, the AHSC Program, the VHHP Program, all of these millions of dollars that we talk about in the state of California, we have leveraged dollars, so that they're not coming out of our general fund, so that they are those small match dollars that get us those larger grant dollars. So once again, to reiterate, what I would like to hear are the outcomes of the PLHA 2020 to 2025, not in a report that is put before us, that shows the programs that we've had and the data that's come out of them. But the programs that have been paid for through these dollars, I would like to hear from these programs what those measured outcomes are and the expectations going forward. And then I would like to hear what our next five-year action plan is. And most importantly, to reiterate, I'd like to know if we left any PLHA formula grant competitive entitled dollars on the table. Not our standard PLHA, our formula grant entitled dollars. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
We have no other speakers.
All right, thank you very much. Close the public hearing. All right, so this is before the city council now. The request here is to receive and accept the CAEPER report and any public comments. Do I have a motion to do that?
I'll just make your comment.
Sure.
I was just going to say, one of the things, or lax action items that we took with the CDVG was to move or proceed forward with a substantial amendment, which is making sure that we don't leave any money on the table, that we are able to reallocate funds that did not, were not utilized in the way that they were intended for various reasons. And so that was the last meeting that we held. And it's, I think it's a 60 to 90-day process that we are waiting to move forward and bring that substantial amendment information back to this body. So we are looking at, for example, there's been some discussion before on Hope Solutions. There was a project that was not able to go forward. I had to think it had to do with property value and, and the market changing. And so that, those funds, which was about 1.2, I don't remember the exact amount, million, are funds that had not been utilized in the way that they were intended. So we want to bring that back to discussion and see how we can best utilize. I know that our city manager is reorganizing, reorganizing and trying to establish a housing development component or department within our, our city. And so that we can be on the front end of opportunities for grant or to utilize funding that we still have readily available to us. So that's just kind of a summary statement from the CDVG's last meeting and what we're moving to hopefully be able to accomplish moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Torres Walker.
Thank you for that update, Mayor Protem. I, I, I guess what I really want to highlight in all of this, because I mean, everything needs to be worked on. Nobody wants to leave any dollars on the table, right? When we have so many people in great need in our community. What I do want to highlight is that, like, I was appointed to the CDVG Standing Committee in 2020. And so I've been there ever since. It feels like forever, right? But what makes the CDVG Standing Committee so important is that these dollars are meant to be used for our most vulnerable community members, hands down, in Antioch. And my, I've, I've looked at the census tract data, right? That is used to actually help this council make decisions around priorities and how to spend these dollars. Myself and Mayor Protem Rocha had an opportunity to review the census tract data, to, data, to look at race, ethnicity, income, education levels, housing. What are people experiencing along these census tracts? So that we ourselves can understand who in our community has been served by these dollars. And so when I'm reading this reporting and say, over the past five years of the consolidated plan, we have spent $8 million to serve our most vulnerable communities, which include youth, seniors, and, and other folks, right? These funds over the past five years have supported more than 6,359-plus households and individuals. That's people facing homelessness, that's people involved in the potential for domestic violence, that's youth who are facing homelessness, youth who need resources, that's seniors, that's services and resources for our seniors, and programs like Meals on Wheels, right? All of our vulnerable community members being served through CDVG. And when I think about public safety, I think about all those individuals in those census tracts who need services in our community. And so I actually just want to like, thank Council, Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem Rocha for like stepping in and diving into all of this on this committee and actually wanting to understand and see who is being served by these dollars and the importance of these dollars in our community. And I also want to thank the city manager and city staff for doing all they can in the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources to streamline processes and make sure we aren't leaving any money on the table to serve some of our most vulnerable, some of our most vulnerable residents, which is a matter of public safety. And so we actually had a, a woman who came to the CDVG Standing Committee because of the rehabilitation program for residents, where she applied because I believe her roof, she was having some issues. And this program actually helped her save a lot of dollars to, it like, the insurance denied her. It was, it was crazy, and she was able to get these dollars from the city to like rehab her roof for her home, for her and her, her, her mom, who is a senior. And like, that's who these dollars serve. So I just wanted to put that out there because I know there's always, you know, people are having meetings, town halls, and conversations around the city around how public dollars are being spent. Some people might tell you they support these programs, and then behind the scenes tell other people that they don't really support poor people and working-class people, but tell you in public that they do. And I'm telling you right now in public that these dollars actually serve poor working-class people in the city of Antioch. And I want us to keep bringing this money to the table, not leave any dollars on the table. And thank you, city manager and staff, for the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources. And I will be more than happy to make a motion if there's no further discussion.
Any further discussion? All right, would you like to make a motion?
So, um, the, oh, it's just a recommend.
It's just a receive and accept.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion that the city council receive and accept the CAEPER report and any public comments.
All right, we have a motion and a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second, please cast your votes.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion passes 5-0.
All right, moving on to our next public hearing, Slatton Ranch Townhomes Project.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. The project applicant, Catherine Watt with DeNova Homes, Inc., is seeking approval of a vesting tentative subdivision map and design review for the Slatton Ranch Townhome Project. The project includes the development of 17 townhome buildings with 129 total residential units and associated improvements. The project is located north of Wicklow Way and east of Slatton Ranch Road. Zoe Meredith, our planning manager, will introduce a consultant from Rainey Planning and Management that served as project manager for this project.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have Kevin Valente from Rainey Planning and Management here. He'll be presenting this project and is available to answer questions, as am I. We have a PowerPoint ready.
Great, thank you, Zoe. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kevin Valente, Senior Planner for Rainey Planning and Management. I also have my colleague Angela DeRosa here. She's a Division Manager for Rainey Planning and Management and our environmental and air quality specialist, who can answer any specific questions on the environmental review for this project. So yes, tonight we have a proposed residential project that is requesting approval for a vesting tentative subdivision map and design review. The approximately six-acre project site is located north of Wicklow Way and east of Slatton Ranch Road. The project site is located within the East Lone Tree Specific Plan and is designated as East Lone Tree Specific Plan Focus Area in the Antioch General Plan. The site is zoned High Density Residential, or R25. And the East Lone Tree Specific Plan allows for a mix of, mix of employment, commercial, residential uses, and public uses, as well as parks and open space. Amendments to the East Lone Tree Specific Plan in 2023 expanded opportunities for multifamily housing within the specific plan area, as depicted in the city's six-cycle housing element. As part of the city's six-cycle housing element update process, the city identified the site for future multifamily housing. And therefore, the site was rezoned from planned development to its current R25 designation. The proposed project includes the development of 17 townhome buildings totaling 129 residential units. The proposed project will include a total of 1.77 acres of landscaping and open space, consisting of an open play area, dog park, and open space for bioretention. Each residential unit would include a two-car garage, and the centrally-located play area would include 19 additional vehicle parking spaces. The 129 residential units would consist of a mix of two- and three-bedroom units, ranging in size from 1,293 square feet to 1,791 square feet. The proposed vesting tentative subdivision map would subdivide the project site for the development of the 17 townhome buildings, the associated internal roadway network, and landscaping. The proposed map is for condominium purposes and would allow for the sale of each residential unit. All internal roadways would be privately owned and maintained by homeowners and association. Pursuant to the Antioch Municipal Code, the proposed is subject to design review and the city's multifamily residential objective design standards. Each proposed building would be three stories with articulated entryways and covered porches. The architectural style of the proposed residential building would incorporate a stucco and siding exterior with varying colors. The project landscaping features a mix of trees, shrubs, and ground cover. And on October 24th, 2024, the city's Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the Park in Lou fee payment as required by the Antioch Municipal Code, which has been included as a condition of approval. The proposed project was included in the city's six-cycle housing element and identified for future multifamily development. Therefore, a Section 15183 Consistency Memorandum was completed for the proposed project to demonstrate that the project has been adequately analyzed in the Housing Element EIR. Per the SEQUA guidelines, a project that is consistent with the development density established by existing zoning, community plan, or general plan policies for which an EIR was certified, shall not require additional environmental review, except when it is necessary to examine whether there are project-specific significant effects which are peculiar to the project site. The 15183 Consistency Memo determined further environmental review is not required. The city has received comment letters on the proposed project, which include comments regarding the consistency memo. The comments were related to air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and vehicle miles traveled, VMT. The Housing Element EIR addressed potential health risks and determined impacts could occur if construction duration is greater than six months and if the project site is located in a Bay Area Air Quality Management District's Planning Healthy Places Map Area. However, this project site is not within one of those designated healthy plan map areas. Staff has prepared a detailed response to the comments received, which is included in your packet. And the responses did include minor revisions to the consistency memo to address the comments that were received, including the addition of a new condition of approval that would require the preparation of a VMT analysis consistent with the Housing Element EIR. This analysis would identify travel demand management and/or physical measures included in the project that have reduced a VMT. None of these revisions result in new impacts or changes the conclusion of the consistency memo. On August 20th, the Antioch Planning Commission held a public hearing for the proposed project. And the Planning Commission and city staff discussed the comments that were received on the project. And upon close of the public hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended city council approval of all the requested entitlements. City staff has determined the project is, as conditioned, is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning. And as a result, city staff and the Planning Commission recommend city council adopt the resolution in approving the requested entitlements. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions you have. And the applicant is also here today to present to the council. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing right now. Do we have any proponent for the project to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for your time this evening. Oh, that would help, wouldn't it? Sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, Kevin, for your staff report. I also have a PowerPoint presentation. Do you have that loaded up?
Here it comes.
Thank you. I will be quick. I do want to mention as well, as Kevin Valenti noted, we have several applications before the council this evening, the design review of vesting tentative map. But I also do want to highlight for the audience as well that this is an SB 330 preliminary housing application. So this is a SB 330, as the council well knows. It's a state law to encourage new home construction by creating a streamlined objective review. And the city needs to approve this if all, if the project meets. Um and the city needs to approve this if all, if the project meets all the objective standards. In February of two thousand twenty-four, um the city actually indicated that this development does meet all of the city's objective standards. As you can see, this list here, it is designed to meet the standards of the R twenty-five zoning and the multifamily objective standards which the city adopted relatively recently. So either we meet or exceed the required standards, or in some cases, we are less than the lot coverage, which is a good thing. And this is our site plan, just a little bit more detail um for you folks. The access is from Wicklow Way and the access is um right across from the current JCPenney access. There's also an EVA on, from Slatton Ranch Road to the north. The yellow buildings indicate the town home style buildings. These are the buildings that actually have their front doors which face the public streets. And so folks have a front door access directly to the public sidewalk on that street. The access will be gated and there will be tubular steel fencing and between the buildings to prevent folks from coming into the community. The purple buildings are what we call back-to-back town home style buildings. And the reason we developed the um community this way is that it really provides um a, a better efficient use um of the site. So that the drive aisles um service both types of buildings with the garages uh into the drive aisles. You can see also that we have the common area right as you come into the, the center, so you get a really nice view as you come in. Uh towards the north is the other common area, which is an open space plus a dog park. And the buildings are separated so that you, as you drive in the street, you get a really nice view into the community as well. So you don't have just sort of a, a mass of buildings. This provides the uh council members with an idea of, of amassing and how the buildings actually relate to the street. Relate to each other on, on the site and also relate to the landscaping and the open space areas. This would be a perspective looking at the corner of Wicklow and Slatton Ranch Road. This would be looking into the project. You can see where we have the fencing right there, just o- only at the open space areas. And at the fronts, the buildings do face the street, so new residents will have access directly to the public sidewalk. The Rhode Town Homes have three different floor plans. We have a two-bedroom plan and, uh one two-bedroom plan and two three-bedroom plans. We feel this really helps meet the needs of the community for smaller families in town homes. Every unit has a two-car garage with direct access into their unit. Um within the garage, they have room for uh storage, bicycle storage, as well as trash bins. Every unit also has private open space, which I've highlighted in light blue. On the second level is living areas and on the third level are the bathrooms, uh bedrooms and laundry. The second product line we have is a back-to-back town home design. Uh these are, we have two floor plans in these. It's a one-bed, one-two-bedroom plan and one-three-bedroom plan. Again, helping to serve small families. On the first level, again, the two-car garage with direct access into each unit. Each garage has storage plus bicycle storage. The end units have first and second level private outdoor spaces, which you can see in the light blue. And the, what we call the inner units have second and third level private outdoor spaces as well. The landscape plan has been designed so there is really heavy landscaping along the street edges. Every public street also has a parkway strip. The common area, as you can see, is uh centrally located. You get a good view of that as you come into the community. Plus towards the north, uh and we also have another bit of common area. Just to highlight, the common area has kid space. Um the code requires that we have a little wall around the kid space to make sure that the kids don't accidentally run into the street. Uh we have a bocce ball, we have an open play area, picnic tables. And also, that's where the cluster mailboxes will be. To the north, again, we have a dog park. Uh we thought this would serve the community well, as well as another open play area, so kids get a really good chance to run around. The HOA will own all the land, so all the newly created residential lots. The common area parcels, which include the streets, the landscape, uh common area and bioretention. All buildings and the common amenities. These are condominiums, so people own walls in. They don't actually own the land on which their unit sits, but they do own their entire unit. The HOA will be formed to maintain essentially everything. The exterior of all buildings, certain interior things like the fire sprinklers. All the private interior streets, the storm drain system, bioretention facilities in function. And of course, all the common area landscaping and irrigation. In summary, um the project conforms to and is consistent with the city's general plan and housing objectives. The city's multifamily design objectives and consistent with the development standards. And we believe it will provide an attractive and much-needed right-sized housing with amenities for the residents. We appreciate staff's recommendation of approval and we agree with all the conditions of approval. Um I also have a person, the next speaker, Dan Gollub.
Good evening, Council Members. My name's Dan Gollub. I'm a partner with the West Coast Land Use and Environmental Practice Group at Holland and Knight. And I'm counsel to the applicant, so I thought I'd just take a couple of minutes. I didn't expect to get reset, but I'll, I'll try to, try to take the last couple of minutes uh of the applicant presentation.
Yeah, he's still part of the proponent team.
I'm not gonna turn it down, but it, it seems unfair, so I'll just take a couple more minutes, if that's all right. Um we focus on land use and environmental and SEQUA and housing law at Holland and Knight. And I just wanted to say that from our perspective, the city's done exactly what state law requires, which is identify sites in the housing element. Uh promise that those are sites where we're gonna see housing development and analyze them in an EIR. The city has done all that, cer- certified an excellent EIR, which analyzed uh the project's impacts. Uh and made appropriate findings under SEQUA. Uh and that now that we're on the verge of actually approving the specific housing for which the city already committed and planned in the housing element. Unfortunately, we've seen some comment letters and I'm just gonna address a few comments that have been made in the record. By a coalition of labor unions who have said uh that the project shouldn't be approved. Uh and that in fact, a full new EIR should be prepared. There's no legal basis for that contention. Respectfully, we think the city would find itself in violation of housing element law if it were to give in to those demands. The city's staff and its independently commissioned environmental experts have fully analyzed everything that was in those comment letters. And concluded uh that their expert conclusion is there's no peculiar or unusual aspects of this project. Relative to the housing element EIR that would require any further review. Uh with my limited time, I'll just defer largely to what's been said. I saw that yet another letter was put into the record very just before the comment uh period closed from the labor unions who are opposed to the project. That new letter makes no substantive new issues that weren't already thoroughly analyzed by planning staff at the Planning Commission. Which unanimously recommended approval of the project. Air quality and public health impacts associated with this project are not gonna be peculiar or unusual. It's a standard residential construction project. Construction noise and vibration, there's no legitimate reason to expect unusual impacts associated with the project. Uh with respect to noise or construction vibration, again, standard residential project. Operational noise will be consistent uh with general assumptions about uh residential uses. And uh with respective vehicle miles traveled, the city analyzed at a high level vehicle miles traveled in its housing element EIR. And fundamentally concluded that there may be VMT impacts associated with housing element build-out. Uh but the city adopted a statement of overriding considerations and that EIR may no longer be challenged. So I'll simply note that um the state of California and the legislature and the courts have shown increasing dissatisfaction and dismay. At using the SEQUA environmental review process for reasons that are unrelated to environmental impacts. And which are largely seen as ways to slow down projects, to extract concessions uh from a project applicant. Uh we think that's what's happening here. We've submitted for the record. Uh some examples in which these very same project opponents have filed essentially the same kinds of claims against. Any project that they're trying to delay or oppose. Uh we don't think that those represent any good faith uh representation, that there's anything environmentally peculiar about this site. That warrants or permits further SEQUA review.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Members, and I'm available to answer questions about the legal issues if uh those are of interest to the council.
Thank you. Do we have an opponent to the project?
We have Andrew Becker. He'd like to be an opponent to the.
Okay, uh he'll have ten minutes.
Thank you. So um to use the proponents' language, you know, I think that what I find peculiar with the site, um frankly, is that. What was referenced here a lot, um which I think is unique to the city of Antioch and developers and the market rate space coming to the city. Uh is using the um state legislation and the housing element as justification for these developments, which I agree. Those components are justification for housing development overall. My concern is that you utilized a state legislative package that was. Supposed to create, was intended to create housing development within your community and the needs that exist. And so historically, when you look at developments like this, um which are similar to existing developments here in our city. You're gonna find, and a lot of times developers don't wanna talk about, when everybody else wants to talk about, the price. You're gonna find that these units are gonna come out in a market rate space. There is no affordable component here. And so. The expectation is that these units will probably come out, I would anticipate, in the four fifty to five fifty maybe. Um and at that price range, the AMI that you were in, the target market that you are pursuing. Would be your moderate income, eighty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. And then looking at those housing needs that were spoken about here in the city of Antioch. Our housing element, as was talked about once again in this report and the intent for this property. Is that that moderate income need is sixteen point three percent of the housing needs here in the city of Antioch. But what's crazy is that I would say sixty percent of the housing that is being developed. In the city of Antioch addresses that sixteen point three percent need. So my question is. How are we addressing these different housing needs through these different housing element changes for these different sites in our city? That don't meet the true needs of our community? I mean, when you talk about a VMT analo- analysis, right, vehicle miles traveled. What is the intent of VMT? To identify low VMT zones, to spur greenhouse gas emission reductions. To incentivize transit and bicycle-friendly communities. And how does the state typically address those VMT projects? Through a mixed-use component, which is, I think, a bit hypocritical here because you have what was historically a commercial site. That had a, a strong ec- economic opportunity in our city. And you look at other cities across the region and how do they address these commercial sites? By creating mixed-use opportunities. Which also presented here. In one fashion or another, whether the city puts out that land use opportunity. Or just like SB three thirty, the state of Calif- uh the, the developer goes through the state of California's density bonus. Which would allow a thirty percent mixed-use on-site. And a density bonus increase for that affordable component and the mixed-use component. To defray your costs for the property in building. But I think what we find is that developers come in and they say. And I'll say this as a consultant that works with both affordable and market-rate developers. They look at a site and they say, what is the littlest that we can do on-site? That's gonna get us the greatest return? What is the least amount of money that's gonna go into our cost to build? But it's gonna generate us the highest return? And a lot of times, they find that that's not affordable. So then we're stuck here with the project. That frankly, is gonna come out as a condominium opportunity. So we talk about entry-level purchase options. And then you go to those properties here in our city and you find the tenants live there for a while and then they turn around and they rent them out. So now you've just got a market-rate apartment. And so where is the, where is the housing return? I'm not talking about the cost return for the individual that's living in that home. Or I'm not talking about the cost return for the developer that's building that home. I'm talking about where is the return for the city? In addressing their housing needs and their economic needs. And then what does this project do for our city? You have a large amount of unhoused population over there. You're gonna put a market-rate develop up, development up against us without addressing that issue. And just like was done over off of Hillcrest. You're gonna have those residents come in here talking about their cars getting broken into. And we say, oh, well, we put a gate across this one. Like people can't get through a gate. And then if that gate does get broken or that barrier does get broken, who pays that? The HOA, the residents. And so then they come to complain to you saying, well, I gotta pay for these issues. Because you did this to us, but it wasn't you. Cause you're a council that just approves projects and these are developers that develop private property. So Walnut Creek, Dublin. Pleasanton, Livermore. Pleasant Hill, Martinez. Even Martinez is looking at mixed-use developments. Why are we not putting residential over commercial and creating live-work spaces? And then if we talk about, well, these are entry-level housing products. Well, then those commercial spaces are where these individuals or their children are gonna wanna work. And then the city says, well, we have this great housing need. And we're gonna address it. So we're just gonna approve all the housing projects across the city that we can. And nobody even talked about. How all of those cars that are gonna come out of that property from Street A are gonna cross over Wicklow. Currently, there's not even a stop sign there. Is the city putting a stop sign there? Is the developer putting a stop sign there? Is that conclusion gonna come out of that VMT analysis? Cause there was no clarity around that. And that was the same concern that came forward with the Amports Project and those infrastructure improvements. And why don't we talk about those infrastructure improvements surrounding? That potentially could have come out of programs like AHSC, so developers don't have to pay the cost, but the state of California will pay it through grants. Well, then they would have to do those units at fifty to sixty percent AMI. And those would then fall in the ELI or the low-income range. And gosh, that's only forty percent of our city's needs. So why would we wanna address forty percent of our city's needs when we need to address sixteen percent of our city's needs? So with all due respect to the developer, and I appreciate you coming to our city and investing in our city. But respectfully, I'd like to actually know what your investment is. Because that investment generates a return. And so historically, for all of our developments that we are now bearing the burden of cost on. They call that a deficit. Your net negative. So how is this development gonna get us net positive, not in dollars, but in outcomes? What's gonna happen when people are breaking into JCPenney's? Robbing, stealing from cars outside? How are these new residents that moved here from other communities and saw Antioch as their entry-level opportunity, how are they gonna respond to that? If this, if these other developments, their largest concern was safety, was there a safety component built into this HOA? Are there CCTV components on-site? Because Pittsburgh is requesting that you do CCTV on multifamily and commercial sites that their police department can access. Is that happening here? Or does somebody get broken into and then they call APD and they show up three hours later? And that's no disrespect to APD, but that's a reality for the burden that's on our city right now. So how is you as a developer gonna relieve that burden that exists in our city? So to finish, is there CCTV? Is there gonna be access for our community? What are those ingress and egress points for that entrance in? And will there be off-site improvements? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh any public comment besides opponents?
Yes, we have Carrie Watt.
Oh, she already spoke.
And, and Jason Lester.
And Jason Lester.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Jason Lester. I'm the business representative of UA Local 159 Plumbers and Steam Fitters. I'm here tonight representing over 400 Antioch households who are members of other unions as well, union electricians, union sprinkler fitters, and union sheet metal workers. They're also members of the Contra Costa Residents for Reasonable Development. We advocate for projects that promote sustainability and economic equity in the community. I'm here to ask you to support the SEQA appeals we have made on the Slatten Ranch Townhomes Project and Number Five, the Wildflower Townhome Project. I'm speaking about both of those projects right now just to hopefully speed up some time on your next agenda item.
Could you please keep it, keep it on this one?
I can, but my comments will be the same. I'm just trying to save you guys some time too. Both projects have significant noise and vibration impacts from construction. The city did not prepare a noise study for either project, even though the Housing Element EIR says that the city must prepare a noise study because the projects might exceed noise limits. The city should prepare project-level EIRs to address these impacts. Both projects have significant health risks from construction and operational emissions. The city did not analyze air emissions or prepare a health risk analysis for either project. Project construction and operation activities will generate diesel particulate matter or toxic air contaminant. Toxic air contaminants increase people's risk of cancer. The Slatten Ranch project is only 90 feet away from residences that would be exposed to toxic, toxic emissions. SEQA requires that these issues be studied and mitigated as needed. To make sure I'm clear, if the council supports our appeal, you will not stop these projects. I personally don't know of one project that has died because of a city council, of a city council that's upheld SEQA appeals, just like ours. Please help to make this project safer for the residents of the city of Antioch and for the construction workers that I'm representing here tonight. Thank you for your time and thank you for listening. Please support our appeals.
Thank you.
We have no other public comment for this item?
I see one person in the back.
We have two.
This is De Nova Homes, right? So another developer came in front of you a couple months ago. Says, "I love Antioch. I care for Antioch. I've been here 20 years. If you don't approve my project, I'm gonna sell them. I had lots of them for another 20 years." And he wasn't really for Antioch because as soon as you approved his project, he went and put it up for sale. So you got got. So this one did a little less veiled threat, in my opinion, where they come up and, "Here's the law. I got their lawyers. We're gonna do this. We're gonna do that." And no offense, Ron, but we all voted for you because economic development, that was one of your strong points. And I, here's another thing. I don't understand why we're trying to, choosing to do business with a company that has been accused of bribing a former councilperson on our, that represent Antioch. We've worked hard to clean up our community from corrupt policing, yet now we are gonna roll out the welcome mat for a questionable developer. This developer doesn't come here, "Okay, Antioch, this is gonna be a great plan. We're right by a freeway. We want economic development. Did they do their research? Did they ask you? I think mixed-use is great right there. We got a freeway for access, for shopping, and some live-work. It completes what we need. We need economic development to make this city some money." And all I heard, I didn't hear any care from them about Antioch. I don't think we should be courting, I think we should be courting ethical builders that actually care about our city that want to create vibrant live-work spaces, especially in areas with prime freeway access. And that goes for both Wildflower and this one. And I just think it's a bad design. I think it doesn't serve Antioch. And if a builder's gonna develop something on our land, they should try to serve us, the community, and plead to us, the people that live and work here. Thank you.
Can we hear from Crystal Law, please?
Is she Crystal Law?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers. My name is Alora McGuire with Adams-Broadwell Joseph Ann Cardozo on behalf of Contra Costa Residents for Responsible Development. We respectfully request that the council continue the hearing and remand the project back to staff to prepare a project-level EIR that addresses all of the project-specific significant environmental impacts. This is one of two projects being considered tonight that the city claims is exempt from further SEQA review under SEQA Guidelines Section 15183 because it was adequately analyzed under the Housing Element EIR. However, this only applies where there are no project-specific significant environmental effects. Residents submitted comments on July 15th and August 19th, supported by experts, which provided substantial evidence that there will be significant project-specific air quality, noise, public health, and transportation impacts. The city has not adequately analyzed these impacts or demonstrated that the impacts will be mitigated effectively. Accordingly, the city cannot claim exemption under SEQA Guidelines Section 15183. More specifically, the project will have potentially significant and unmitigated health risk impacts from the project's emission of diesel particulate matter during project construction and operation. Our air quality experts conducted health risk analysis of the project's DPM emissions and found that the project's lifetime cancer risk would be 46.4 in 1 million and the age-specific risks would be 32.5, 10.1, and 15.6 in 1 million for infants, children, and adults respectively. That far exceeds the air district's 10 in 1 million significance threshold. The city completely ignores this evidence and has performed no project-specific air quality analysis of its own. Additionally, the city admits that none of the air quality mitigation measures in the Housing Element EIR apply to the project and does not propose any other mitigation. The city also improperly defers the project's potentially significant impacts related to vehicles' miles traveled, or VMT. Our transportation expert provided evidence that the project is likely to have significant VMT impacts that require mitigation. The Housing Element EIR requires a full VMT analysis to be prepared, which the city acknowledges. Despite this, the city does not conduct this required analysis. They instead defer it by including it as a condition of approval. This impermissibly defers analysis in violation of SEQA because it asks you, the decision-makers, to make a decision on the project without full knowledge of the project's significant impacts. The condition also directly contradicts the requirements of the Housing Element EIR mitigation measure Trans-1. Specifically, the condition only requires mitigation to reduce impacts to the maximum extent feasible, while Trans-1 requires impacts to be reduced to less than significant impact levels, so below threshold. Additionally, the project, our noise expert found that the project is likely to result in significant construction noise and vibration impacts. The city does not prepare any site-specific noise analysis to address those impacts and it does not include mitigation that would effectively mitigate those impacts. These are real issues that would affect workers and residents within this community. And they need to be addressed. For these reasons, the project is not exempt from SEQA, from further SEQA review under SEQA Guidelines 15183. Therefore, we request that this council continue the hearing and remand the project back to staff to prepare the project-level EIR. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to tag on what Melissa said, she's not here. So is this the same De Nova Homes that was bribing somebody? Is this the same rainy property management that was at Delta Pines that was given all the problems? I'm just wondering, like, why are we gonna allow these people to continue to come here and do business with us if we know that we can't trust them already?
We have no other speakers?
All right. If there are no other speakers, I'll close the public hearing. All right. Counsel, do you have any questions of staff? Yes, Councilman Freitas?
I'd like to ask staff to please put up the project site schematic.
This one?
No, the one with red, the project site, this one.
Let me switch.
The very beginning. There it is. So, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I apologize because I'd like to go through some of this because I have lots of problems with this particular project as well as the next one. And let me just simply start by saying, knowledge and experience is both a blessing and a curse. So I was elected first in 1998 as city council for two years and served in council as mayor from 2000, 2008. At that time, the number-one issue confronting us was economic development. It took herculean efforts by the council, by the community, and specifically to staff to focus on economic development in the city of Antioch. And during those years, that's where we kept, we moved forward with Slatten Ranch development. We also, during that period of time, we had Jim Jacob, the city manager, and Guy Burkey as the Economic Development Director. And JCPenney's came forward and said, "We want to locate," and you're locate, locate on the particular site that they eventually built on. Why? The answer was obvious. Number one, we are moving forward with the construction of the State Route 4 bypass. So there would be highway activity. To the north, there would be Laurel Road. To the east, Empire. To the south, we would have Lone Tree. That entire area was envisioned as one of the most important economic development sites in the city of Antioch. So what happened? Why didn't people come? Well, here's an example of the state of California usurping local power and discretion through Senate Bill 330 by State Senator Weiner from San Francisco. I don't want to look like San Francisco. And that's why people move into the suburbs. They like to see grass and trees. They like to have, you know, housing. And so I'm not criticizing staff. Staff has complied with the state mandates, particularly with the sixth cycle. And, but the problem is this. This project doesn't belong in this space. And that is one of the biggest reasons I am opposed to this. Again, we all are here to represent the public. And while housing is critical, so is economic development. And my biggest objection to this is we're taking property out of future development. General plans are 20-year planning horizons. We know it takes time to move forward. And in this particular case, what we're moving forward is development. And this will only be the beginning of this project. I mean, as I have criticized, you know, the Oakley Road project and others, staff and the previous city council approved the conditions of SB 330, which basically have put in high-density development all over the city of Antioch. And here is one of those particular sites. We were, controversial was Lone Tree when we had the car wash and the habit and Chipotle. It was very controversial. It was a 3-2 decision. But part of the problem was that right behind that development was R-33. What does R-33 mean? 33 units per acre. What kind of housing are we talking about? Four stories. What is some of the housing around it? Single detached housing. So the people on the fourth floor, third floor, second floor are going to, you know, invade the privacy of some of those homes. And I find that very objectionable. So as I went through this, I got more and more frustrated that here the state of California is again usurping the power. Yes, we are in compliance. But I will tell you, I am furious that this is being shoved down our throat because we have little, literally very few options to say no to this particular project. So in the staff report, I have questions to ask. And so one of those questions, and I was a 16-year elected member of the Contra Costa Water District. And so part of my question is, are there any transmission lines from the Los Vaqueros Reservoir Project? Are there transmission lines from the Randall Bold Water Treatment Plant? Staff does not call that out, but it is an issue. And it's an issue with the city manager and I were on a conversation with the county supervisor, Diane Burgess, with regards to particular development at Laurel. Nobody has responded to the questions that have been raised. Are there issues with right-of-way from Contra Costa Water District as well as the Randall Bold Water Treatment Plant on this particular property? And when I served the city on the East County Transportation, it was amazing to me that the Contra Costa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District said they did not want particular development in this area because of drainage issues. And I see in here that Contra Costa Flood Control District has no objections now. Why? Because I can tell you, for about five years, that's all they did was raise issues with regards to State Route 4 bypass. We used to call it State Route 4 bypass. So that is still an issue that I have particularly. It talks about the fact that the proposed project would result in a density approximately 21 dwelling units per acre. And I just can't, when you look at that site and you look what is in red and you look at the fact that we have Slatten Ranch on Lone Tree, we are destroying, which was the 2003 general plan for economic development, not only for the city of Antioch, but sub-regionally, for Oakley, for Brentwood, for Discovery Bay, and other county unincorporated pieces of property. This is the beginning to the end of destroying economic development in this particular location, and I'm opposed to it. So it appears when SB 330 was passed, that was about two years ago, correct?
No, I believe it was more like 2020 was SB 330.
And when did we become, city of Antioch come in compliance?
Oh, so I'm hearing 2019 for SB 330, taking effect 2020. And then, so we've, it's a state law that we have to follow.
I understand.
So we're always complying with it by following the timelines, by following the procedures in it. So that's, it wasn't a specific reason, per se. So that's why we accepted this preliminary application and compliance with the SB 330 procedures. You know, we developed a checklist, for example, for preliminary application that came along with the law.
So I've been on council for nine months. This is now the second and third project to come forward as a result of SB 330. First one being Lone Tree. Now we have not one, but this project as well as the next one on Number Five. And I just want to call out, under background, the EL, let's see, the ELTSP, which is the East County Plan, was adopted by the city council in May 1996. And the ELSTP area comprises 785 acres on the eastern edge of Antioch. So that's more than 20, 29 years ago. This has been what has been envisioned in this particular area. And as you go through-- And as you go through, we talk about, you know, the EL TSB will allow mix of employment, commercial, residential uses and public uses, as well as parks and open space to develop in this particular area. In 2023, two years ago, expanded opportunities for multiple-family housing was actually adopted, and that's the result of SB 330. So then we move on, and, you know, we talk about, you know, some of the process that we have. And one of the things that I think is interesting, developer had 180 days from the submittal of preliminary application to submit the full development application, which took place when they submitted on March 15th. So we have met all those, all those demands, I think, at Antioch's detriment. When I looked at the tentative map, you know, on, can you show the development now, please? Or the schematic? Where is the traffic going to enter and exit? That's on Wicklow. So everything is going to be funneled in that particular area, everything. People going in, people going out. And what are they going to look at across the street is the play area for children. Really? Now, the proponent said, "Oh, it's going to be a nice view." Well, that's great, but from my perspective as a council member, I'm concerned about safety. And even though you have some retaining walls in there to quote-unquote "protect children," children climb over those walls. And I am very concerned about the safety of children in this particular area, which will be the most traveled area in this whole subdivision, because it's literally the ingress and egress of this particular development. It makes absolutely no sense to me to put the common area in this place. And if you take a look around the east, north, and west, those are other parking spaces for cars. So kids who live there will be going in, to enter that space, they're going to be going in and out in between these cars. Again, I'm not a planner, but that makes absolutely no sense to me from a safety perspective, particularly for our children. It just seems crazy to me. Now, there's an item called Parcel L, which is to the eastern portion. And staff, can you tell me what's going to be there?
Uh, where's?
It's, it's to the very bottom. It's to the eastern side. It's Parcel L, I believe.
Is that the opens? Let me double check, or maybe that probably?
K and L are the open space. It says here K, K, which is the middle. The proposed project would include .34 acres of common open space located north of the gated entrance on Parcel K. That's K. And then, I love it, Buildings 5 and 6 will have windows facing the common area. So what? So for the 200 or, 200 or more people that will be living there, they get a third of an acre. Wow, they get a third of the acre. That's what, that's what we're giving these people with their children. The second common area, open space area, approximately 5,200 square, square feet, would be located in Parcel M, which is to the north. And what I don't understand, to the north, it identifies a road. So can you, by, with your pointer, show where the dog park's going to be? And is that up? And so this road up there, what is that?
Are you referring to Conamara Road here?
Yes.
So that is currently undeveloped, just, it's dirt essentially, but it is public right-of-way, and our engineering staff can speak more to that.
Okay, so that, so a few, a future road may be there? The answer is yes. So that's great, there's going to be a road right there, and there's the wall with very little separation, you know, from the fence, which is an open fence, so the noise will be quite loud, through those particular houses in that particular area. But the, the dog part is facing a street, so it's squashed in there? Is that what that, what's happening?
This, it's maybe hard to see my cursor, is the dog park. And then this is another open area.
And what's in the open area?
So here's the dog park.
Right.
Yeah, and so it is next to Street C.
Right.
And then, if you mean this area, this is the stormwater area.
It's the biodetention facility?
Right.
And biodetention facilities, they kind of indentation, and they collect water, right?
Correct, and our engineering staff can provide more information if you'd need.
Oh, I think the public understands. And so, but they get credit for open space? Is that correct?
So there's usable open space, and then there's landscaping. So the calculations are about usable open space. There's private, meaning the decks and the balconies, and then there's the public, meaning the, oops, the dog park, the kids' play area, these types of open spaces. So in this calculation, as general landscaping, open space, meaning not roads, not buildings, then yes, that counts towards bio-retention, but it doesn't count towards usable open space.
Yeah, but, but it does count for open space. calculation requirements, and open space is a requirement.
So again, we have the usable open space requirements, so an unused area for bio-retention that's not accessible does not count towards usable open space requirements. There's other calculations like lot coverage. It doesn't count towards lot coverage because it's not covered towards a building, so there's a few different calculations here, and I know the applicant kind of had a chart of that, too. But there's generally, we're talking about landscaping as in areas with landscaping and plants, and then they're broken down further in terms of if it's usable for the residents or not.
So those people that are right next to this, this is a biodep, not biodetention facility. So when they look out their windows on the second and third floor, they're just going to see a big space that collects water sometimes during the year.
It will have that, but it is also landscaped.
With what?
So there's a variety of plants in the landscaping, but I believe it's, there are specific lists of plants for bio-retention, so there, you know, it's not trees, but it is a landscaped area.
Isn't it usually grasses?
Usually more like grasses.
Right. And, and it's a biodetention, so it'll be green in spring, but it's going to be brown in the summer, correct?
So if I may interject.
Sure.
This is an underground basin. This is not what you'd think of as a normal detention basin. This would be underground. So basically, if you look out those, you would see a flat area with access to underground areas. So I would imagine it would be landscaped in some fashion, not usable, but it would be not necessarily a drainage ditch, but it'd be a flat area with a drainage area underneath it.
So what, what, what is the landscaping?
In, in that area, over the detention basin?
Yeah.
I, I am unaware of what it's going to be. But that's where the area's going to be. It won't, it's not a depression, though, that's all I just want to make sure.
Well, I appreciate that, but the point is that for open space considerations, they're looking out their window, and it seems to me that it'll be green when it rains, and it's going to be brown, dead, when it's, you know, the summer months.
And I don't believe.
And today, our temperature was 100 degrees.
Understood. I, I just wanted to make clear that, like I said, not a typical detention basin as you would think of, and in terms of how it's landscaped, I'm not sure exactly what the intent is, but just wanted to be clear of what would actually be installed in that area.
No, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
The, the other is that in the, what did you call it? The, the 15183 Consistency Memorandum, the one thing I did like is all internal roadways would include a five-foot sidewalk. I assume that's on both sides of the street?
Um, you can see the sidewalks kind of called out here, so there's here, and then when it's, this is, as the applicant explained, you know, they have the back-to-back units, and then they have the townhome units. So depending, you, the sidewalks here, and then there's more the driveways for the townhome units, but then they have the sidewalk on the front. So it kind of depends on the layout of.
Okay. So I apologize, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, but I get worked up in this area. The other, as I'm going through the consist, consistency report, I did mark, and I apologize, there's, so, no, I talked about that. So could you go to L4 on the consistency? I don't know if you have a slide for it?
Are you, no way, we don't have a slide for that.
So in L4 for the public, they show us what they're going to put in. And it's described as six-foot-tall tube steel vertical with swing gate at the main entry. So it is one of the ugliest things I've seen. I think it's institutionalized, and for me, it does not enhance the project whatsoever. But we're going to have some fencing. And I, again, some of the standards that have been followed and the impacts that they have, I find very objectionable. And I think frankly that this project and the next one, you know, are proof positive that, you know, the Soviet system of planning that the state of California has been using, I think is a failure at the local level, because discretion is no longer with us. And that concerns me tremendously. And so what I would like to ask, we've had some of the discussion in the past, but because of SB 330 and because of the need for us to be legally in compliance, we found this out on Lone, on Lone Tree, now we find it on this particular project, and the next project, we will find it on Hillcrest. I think, you know, we need to take a look as a council, because this is a new council, on the designated areas for, that met the six-year of, whatever you call it, six-year housing element compliance. Because I absolutely do not want to give up some prime property for economic development. I don't. I know what went in 22 years ago to fight for economic development. I, I agree that there should be the mixed use, where the first floor is commercial, second, third floor could be used for housing. I'd love to do it down here in Rivertown. I think it'd be a great way of, of bringing people and having economic development and a marriage between the two. But for this particular project, Mr. Mayor, council, community, I am opposed to it. I, I think it's a blight. I just philosophically, because I was there for all those fights, cannot give up property that should be used for economic development. Thank you for letting me have the time to vent.
All right. Any other comments from council, Mayor Protan Rocha?
Well, I just want to say I appreciate Councilmember Freitas's historic view, because some of the communications I received were in regard to what was the intent of the, of this development. You know, I had people write to me asking me about, wasn't this supposed to be the East Lone Tree special? It was like a plan that was supposed to go into place to have mixed development economics with housing and try to promote both housing and economic development. And that was done many years ago. I didn't know the history, those were some of my questions. Thank you for answering those questions. And, you know, sitting on the, the different transit system boards and learning of the different transit requirements in the state of California, where we have to do high-density housing in hubs where there's transit, I'm concerned that we're doing high-density in what was proposed years ago to be an economic mixed development that would bring employment, that would bring housing and new business to that region. And so I'm concerned that this doesn't meet any of those needs. I'm also concerned when I read that it was the Nova Home investigation, I remember the De Nova Home investigation that I've read and heard about, I haven't been involved with any of that, and I just don't know legally if that's still ongoing and what's happening with that. That brings me some concern. So thank you for sharing the historic view of what the intent was of this plan many years ago. I know we have a responsibility, and California is moving rapidly into developing housing and trying to, you know, to expedite the process, bypass some of the steps that were required before. So I have more questions and reservations than I do feeling comfortable going forward with this, so I, too, am not able to support this at this time. I would like to have staff maybe review and bring back some. I don't know what our rights are when we have a state initiative that requires us to move at a fast rate to build and potentially, in doing so, do more harm than good for our community. And so I, I have, I don't know what a no means for us when the California state says that it's something we're required to do. I'm a no, but I don't know what that means for the city, and I'd like staff to help educate me on what our rights are.
Councilmember Torres Walker?
I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at Councilwoman Wilson, because, I mean, I should care about it. It's not in my district, but I do, you know, are one of them, but who, four or three. But I think, for, for me, it's kind of hard to support any development that's not affordable. And we just had a conversation, this council last week, around inclusionary housing and inclusionary housing ordinance. We, I had the housing element with me and highlighted what the housing element says about housing issues in this city. And I, I think any development that's not going to meet, like, the needs of poor working-class folks into home ownership, I can't personally support anyway. And then I also just want to highlight that, you know, I'm happy to see that people are still upholding a 30-year-old vision in the city of Antioch. That seems to be par for the course. And I also, you know, related to SB 330, I mean, we are a general law city. I mean, we, we, we have local control, but we have very little local control when you have to adhere by the state standard and state law. So I'm not necessarily sure what this would mean if this project isn't approved. It might not be any legal ramifications. It might be like a different site selection. So I think, like, those are the questions that I have. And, and then I also heard Councilmember Freitas comments around, like, you know, mixed-use development. I'm definitely for that. I don't know which location you're talking about in District 1 for that mixed-use housing, but that might be an argument later down the road. So, so, yeah, I, I think I'm just more interested in, like, it, this not moving, you know, if this doesn't move forward, then because it is an obligation by the state, what are to follow, you know, what is the potential of selecting separate sites? Where would those be? And, and even if we did select a separate site, I'm not sure I would support it, because it's not affordable, in my opinion.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes, I will wrap, well, no, you're going to wrap it up. So I appreciate my fellow councilmembers' thoughts on this item. Actually, Councilmember Freitas, I don't know if you remember when you, when I first got elected, you did the drive, and you're like, "A hotel's going to go here," and that was one of the areas. But here's why I'm getting concerned. A, we have these state-level electeds that don't necessarily come from our area, they come from, they come from very urban cities, and they, they write these laws with philosophy around their urban cities, and they don't take, and you know, you, you want your state representatives to, as they're writing a bill or writing a law, to write it and then step back and go, "Is this going to harm somebody?" Or they're going to, this is going to... Or are they gonna, this is gonna take something away? So I'm finding a lot of times on our state level, a lot of our local control, control is being taken away. But with that being said, I'm gonna round it up on the environmental side of all this, because I have to point things out. We have, Sequo was originally put in a place to help protect city in, for, when it comes to the environment, to make sure that our, our communities are protected from, you know, gases, pollution, air quality, and that was a great thing when it was, when that was, when that, when Sequo came to be. But we're finding more and more that developers are coming in, and kind of misconstruing it, and using it in a way that it wasn't intended to be. I'm hoping that we can push our state-level electeds to relook at Sequo to make sure that that doesn't happen. So I also had a lot of concerns, although, you know, I'm, I'm, I like townhome projects, I like mixed-use projects, but I had some concerns about this area, because what I was told on my tour, what that area was going to be. But there's just a lot of environmental issues that I'm concerned about. It, it, this is, there's just, this is a problematic thing, and then also, too, we need to be paying attention to our state-level electeds on what laws they're passing, and how it's negatively impacting us. But, right now, I am a no. This might be a better project someplace else, but I'm a no. I'm also concerned with the two projects on Loan Tree, because as Ms. Case pointed out, we had, you and I were the lone no votes, we had somebody come in and played us. And now we're gonna have a, probably, well, I'm not gonna go down there, because we're not talking about that particular project, but at this point, there's too many, there's issues, in particular, some environmental issues that I feel have not been addressed in this project, so I, I don't see this moving forward.
All right, I'm gonna ask staff a few questions, that's okay, through the city manager. Are there any unmitigated significant impacts on this project? Yes or no?
I don't know, but I can speak to the, have our Sequo consultant come up and provide more information about that, if you'd like.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Angela DeRosa, I'm with Rainy Planning and Management. The city hired us as a third-party consultant to prepare the 15183 Sequa Consistency Analysis. I can go into as much detail as you'd like, but generally, the Housing Element EIR adequately addressed all of the environmental impact issue areas of the Housing Element sites. This project is a Housing Element site, and as identified in our 15183 checklist, or our memo, there are a number of mitigation measures and policies that this project will have to comply with, as set forth in the Housing Element EIR, that would ensure that the impacts are reduced to, as, to, I want to say less-than-significant level, but as far as reduced to the level as identified in the Housing Element EIR. So, for example, VMT was identified in the Housing Element EIR, has a significant and unavoidable impact. This project, in particular, this site, was already identified in the Housing Element EIR as potentially resulting in a significant and unavoidable VMT impact.
And so that, that EIR was certified by a prior council, and therefore, under that previously adopted EIR, it's an unmitigated impact that had overriding considerations?
Exactly. Exactly. The city certified that EIR, the Housing Element EIR, and adopted its statement of overriding considerations for those significant and unavoidable impacts identified.
And so that, that would be consistent for all, all the different impacts in the project? They're either covered by the EIR for the housing element, or any environmental work you did otherwise?
Exactly, yes. There is no, there are no peculiar environmental impacts of this project.
Okay, perfect. Couple of infrastructure questions, so, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't know who this is gonna be for. Empire Mine Road, or not Empire Mine Road, Empire Avenue, is, is the right-of-way dedicated for the full width of that road, and is this project constructing the full improvements on the, on the west side of Empire Avenue, up, up to their project boundary? That's not, you, that's up for the director? Okay.
I'm looking over to the engineering staff right now.
I'm, and I, and I apologize, I, I sent an email, but it didn't go through earlier, you might've got it later, got stuck in, stuck in the thing.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank our Community Development Department, they've done a lot of work on this project. I know they're not the easiest to go through, and they may not make everybody happy, but there's a lot of effort that does go into this, and I think they've done a great job. As for this project, this project will be doing the frontage improvements along Empire, they won't be widening the road. As for the width of the road, I believe there's road also to be taken to the, to the east into Brentwood, when there's more improvements done on that side of the road. I believe that we have the, the curb line established on the western side.
So, so, so this project will not be building the ultimate west-side improvements of Empire?
This...
Up to their property line?
They'll be doing, yeah, they're frontage improvements, but their road will remain a, a two-lane road. They're taking care of their frontage on Empire.
Okay, their frontage, and then they're taking care of whatever responsibility for half the median and all the other stuff?
And their side at this point, and then it'll be expanded when, when it builds out.
Conimara, what, is that road ever gonna become anything?
You know, it's a remnant that's sitting out there, we're not sure it's part of this, it is a public right-of-way for a roadway. What the development ends up looking like that to the, to the, to the north of this project, it could be utilized in some fashion. Right now, it's, it's not intended, I don't have a use for it at this point, it is just a dead-end remnants of a road for future use.
So is it, is it dedicated, then? Are they doing a irrevocable offer dedication on that?
This is already city right-of-way.
It's already city right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
So are they gonna build the improvements over that?
There is no improvements planned on that area.
So then who's gonna build them when it's ultimately necessary?
If that road was going to be utilized, it would probably be utilized for future development to the north of that, possibly, so then I would expect it to be developed with that development.
Okay. I didn't notice in the conditions that this project is annexing into the landscaping and lighting district out there, is, are they being required to...
It would be part of a CFD, yes.
Or, to maintain medians and the...
Sure, it is a private development, but there is still a CFD related.
Okay. For landscaping, correct? Because I saw, I saw CFD for, for police, but I didn't see anything related to landscaping.
In the, in the public areas, yes.
Okay. The, there, so when this specific plan is, Councilmember Freitas referred to, was originally envisioned, all the housing on the west side of Highway 4 had to pay $12,000 a unit towards the construction of Slatton Ranch Road, to kind of jumpstart that, that road. And so, all those houses paid for that, are, is this housing project gonna be required to contribute the same amount towards, towards Slatton Ranch Road construction, since it's a residential?
I would have to, I, I would have to look into that, I'm not sure.
Okay, because that's, that's gonna be important, if it's not, to, to capture it now as a condition of approval, if the project's gonna go forward as a, as opposed to, you know, after it's, after it's approved, we're not gonna be able to go back and get it.
Yeah, understood.
I have a question for the applicant, if I could. If, we, we, there was mention a couple of times about an inclusionary housing ordinance that the city's considering. If, this is a hypothetical question, but what would be the, what would be the impact, in your opinion, on this project if we had a 15% inclusionary housing ordinance in place right now, on this project? You know, similar to, I know, I know you guys have, I know you guys have other, other projects in other communities that have inclusionary, probably most of them, and so I'm just curious what would, how that, how that would impact this viability of this project.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, my name's Dana Saboda, and I am a member of the DeNove team. At this point, it wouldn't pencil. If we had had that at the outset, where we could have figured that into costs, perhaps, but I, I would suspect that at this point, it would not be buildable, because we are so far down, we are, Zoe would know the exact date when we were deemed complete, but we're years into this process, and we're years into a process where we are developing a piece of property that the city designated for exactly this use, with exactly these numbers, and exactly this open space, and exa, I mean, right, we're, we were stuck with this piece of land, with having exactly this project, with these numbers, this unit count, because this is what the city's general plan actually required. And so consequently, that wasn't a piece of it at the time that we did all of the analysis, and when we pushed that extra 15%, the problem is, we're not likely going to be able to get lending to construct, and that's our struggle.
And then if, if you said if you had built it into the front end of the project, what, something has to give, right?
Usually it's land value, right? So you figure out, the, the nice thing about, and I, I'm not going to tout the benefits of state control, but the nice thing about what SB 330 says is, from our perspective, you know exactly what the city has ordained for a piece of property, and if you stick within the four corners of what was ordained, on the front end, you can calculate how much it's going to cost to build, and then you know what the residual land value should be, so you know what you can pay for the land, in order to determine the project that's gonna be there. Here, to have something like a 15% affordable component on the back end is very, very challenging, because we already own the land. We don't have the ability to go back and negotiate on the price of the land. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
So that's our struggle.
Okay, I understand, thank you very much. That's all, that's all the questions I have for staff.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
A couple of comments came up with regards to traffic, and this is some of your other comments, on page 10 of our report, I'm just gonna read from the report. "The project's contribution to traffic will exceed city standards at the intersection, because it is forecasted to have a Level of Service LOSF conditions, while also meeting Caltrans' peak hour warrant for a traffic signal. The ex, the intersection would operate at LOSF and meet Cal, uh, Caltrans' peak hour traffic signal warrant regardless of whether or not the proposed project is implemented." "Level of service is a scale, describes traffic flow with six ratings ranging from A to F, with A indicating relatively free flow of traffic, and F indicating stop-and-go traffic characterized by traffic jams." I'm not sure that that's something we want to embrace, you know, in this development, because it will have consequences on all future developments, if we're already institutionalizing Level F at intersections. Thank you.
All right, does, does Council have any more questions of staff, or consultants, or applicant?
If I could just jump in real fast, before Council makes any final decision on this matter, you know, just reading the city leaves, if it seems like Council is leaning towards denying this project, staff would request to continue this matter about 30 days out to the second meeting in October, so then they can conduct an analysis, because you know, the reasons for this denial are fairly constrained pursuant to SB 330. And staff is not ready to kind of advise on that tonight, so the request would then be to continue with 30 days out, so staff can conduct further analysis, and then present it at that time. And I've been informed that it should be able to go at the second meeting in October.
Okay. Very good, so is, is the recommendation then from staff that we continue this item until the second meeting in October?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's a recommendation from staff?
Wait, order.
Yes.
So, we're not continuing the public hearing, is that correct? We're just continuing the action item?
Yes.
I'll move approval.
All right, we have a motion to continue this item to the second meeting in October, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, please catch your votes.
Motion passes, motion passes, five to zero.
All right, moving on to item number five, Wildflower Station, this also is a public hearing, Wildflower Station Townhomes, two multifamily residential project. I guess Kevin's gonna make the presentation again?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. So, yeah, the next item is again, a proposed residential project that is requesting approval for a vesting tentative subdivision map and design review. "The approximately 10-acre project site is located east of Hillcrest Avenue and west of Wildflower Station Place. The project site was part of a larger 23-acre Wildflower Station project, that includes single-family homes, condominiums, and planned commercial development, that was entitled in 2018. The single-family homes and townhomes were constructed, but the commercial parcels were not constructed, and the land sat undeveloped. As part of the city's six-cycle housing element update process, the city identified this site for future multifamily housing development, and therefore amended the general plan, land use designation for the site from mixed-use to high-density residential, and rezoned the project site from planned development to high-density R25. The proposed project includes the development of 19 townhome buildings totaling 159 residential units. The proposed project would include a total of 2.8 acres of landscaping and open space, consisting of two open play areas and open space for bioretention. Each residential unit would include either a single-car or two-car garage, and the two centrally-located play areas would include 25 additional vehicle parking spaces, with another 57 surplus shared parking spaces with the adjacent Wildflower Station development. The 159 residential units would consist of a mix of two- and three-bedroom units, ranging in size from 1,135 square feet to 1,381 square feet. The proposed vesting tentative subdivision map would subdivide the project site for the development of the 19 townhome buildings, the associated internal roadway network, and the landscaping. The proposed map is for condominium purposes and would allow for the individual sale of each residential unit. Automatic gates are proposed as an option at the entrances, pending approval from the current homeowners of Wildflower Station Place and their homeowners' association. All internal roadways would be privately owned and maintained by the edgeway. Pursuant to the Antioch Municipal Code, the proposed is subject to design review and the city's multifamily residential objective design standards. Each proposed building would be three stories with articulated entryways and covered porches. The architectural style of the proposed residential buildings would incorporate a stucco and siding exterior with varying colors, and the project landscaping features a mix of trees, shrubs, and ground cover. Again, on October 24th, 2024, the city's Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the park in lube fee payment as required by the Antioch Municipal Code, which has been included as a condition of approval on the project. The proposed project was included in the city's six-cycle housing element and identified for future multifamily development. Therefore, a Section 15183 Consistency Memo was completed for the proposed project to demonstrate that the project had been adequately analyzed in the Housing Element EIR. The Consistency Memo determined further environmental review is not required for the project. The city has received letters on the proposed project, which include comments regarding the Consistency Memo, and the comments related to air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and VMT. The Housing Element, EIR, addressed potential health risks, determin, and determined impacts could occur in construction duration is greater than six months, and if the project site is located in Backmud's Planning Healthy Places map area. This project is located with one of these designated areas, and therefore is subject to the Housing Element EIR mitigation measure, Air-3A, which would be, which would be sufficient to, that mitigation measure would be sufficient to reduce any construction diesel particulate matter, or DPM, emissions to a less-than-significant level. Staff has prepared a detailed response to these comments, which is included in your staff report packet, and the responses include minor revisions to the Consistency Memo to address these comments. None of the revisions result in new impacts or change the conclusions in the 15183 Consistency Memo. On August 20th, the Antioch Planning Commission held a public hearing for the proposed project, and the Planning Commission and city staff discussed these comments received on the project, and upon close of the public hearing, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend city council approval of all the requested entitlements. City staff has determined that the proposed project as condition is consistent with the city's general plan... City staff has determined that the proposed project as condition is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning and housing element. And as a result, city staff and the planning commission recommend the city council adopt the resolution approving the requested entitlements. That completes my presentation, and the applicant team is also here to provide a presentation.
All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing right now. Do we have a proponent for the project? See, we do.
Good evening, council members, Dan Gollub, project applicant council from Holland and Knight. I hope you'll understand if, given the tenor of the last conversation, we're going to switch things up, the lawyer is going to talk first. That's somewhat related to some issues that we did exhaust in the administrative record with respect to both projects. It is an unambiguous violation of the Housing Accountability Act for the city council to disapprove a residential development project, which this is, except on the basis of extremely narrow findings. And there is no basis on the record on which such findings could be made. I'll stop just very quickly and talk about the SEQA documentation. On this project, there is even less of an issue with respect to SEQA. This project is actually now fully exempt from SEQA pursuant to AB 130, the recent SEQA exemption that was passed. So even if there were any issue with the consistency determination, and there isn't, the project's fully exempt from SEQA. The project also fully screens out a VMT. So there's absolutely no SEQA issue with respect to this project. So then that brings us to the merits. There's been a lot of discussion of SB 330 of 2019 that was sponsored by the East Bay Senator Nancy Skinner. That law provides that projects that submit a preliminary application are entitled to clear vested rights on the basis of the standards that were in effect at the time of the preliminary application. And what that means is a project simply can't be denied on the basis of a standard that wasn't in effect at the time of the prelim. I think the mayor's comments and discussion explain the reasons why, right or wrong, the state thinks that's the appropriate policy here. Both projects, especially this one, were planned on the basis of those objective standards, and it's a violation of the HAA and exposes the city to mandamus relief, potential fines and penalties, and attorney's fees if it disapproves a project without paying attention to those vested rights. The other law that applies here is the Housing Accountability Act. That law was reformed by SB 330, but it's been around since 1982. I litigated the leading case under the Housing Accountability Act. It's called the California Renters versus San Mateo case. Strongly encourage you to get some information from your staff and your council about that case. It was an act, that's before SB 330, and holds that if a city wants to disapprove a housing development project, it has to timely identify within 60 days of completeness what objective standards the project conflicts with. If the city doesn't do that within 60 days of completeness, the project is deemed to comply with the standards as a matter of law. And that didn't happen for this project. The city, in fact, confirmed that the project meets objective standards. So it can't be found non-compliant with those objective standards at the city council approval stage. Even if the city, so the project is deemed consistent with objective standards, there's no dispute that the project, both projects, are fully consistent with all of the general plan, zoning, specific plan, and housing element standards. As a right, as a, as a result, it is unambiguously unlawful to disapprove the project. The only permissible findings, which cannot be met here on this record or any other, would be if there is a clear, unambiguous, objective, public health or safety standard, and you have to further find, on the basis of a preponderance of the evidence, that there's no way to mitigate that public health and safety standard. And I'll say respectfully, without, with respect to either project, there is no basis and there was no finding. And the courts will not countenance a post hoc articulation or attempt to make new findings or different findings. It'll be judged on the basis of the decision the council just made and will be making today. For those reasons, I hope it's clear, to disapprove this project would be plainly unlawful and would subject the city to substantial liability. We said that in the record with respect to both projects, saying it a little more clearly now. Oh, and by the way, that's for any housing development project. It, it's especially true when you, the city specifically and expressly identifies the site on its housing element. That creates a whole new let of legal violations, which the state of California and the Department of Housing Community Development will be very surprised to learn that a locality just a couple of years ago said, "These are good housing sites. We promise the state of California and the people of state of California that we will be advancing housing opportunities on these two expressly identified sites," and then a couple of years later disapproves the projects. That will require you to revisit all of your housing element assumptions and will expose the city to the builder's remedy. The builder's remedy applies anytime a city does not have a substantially compliant housing element and allows developers to propose any projects they wish, as long as they're at least, you know, 13% affordable, and completely deviate from the city's general plan and zoning. So this is the consequence of not following through on housing element commitments. These two projects attempted in all respects to comply with the city's code requirements and proposed projects that comply with code. If the city is determined to disapprove projects that are identified in their housing element, notwithstanding their consistency with all objective standards, the state is unfortunately going to take the position that the project is therefore, that the city is therefore subject to a potential builder's remedy. These are the reasons that we think the project very clearly mandates approval. We think it's entitled to approval and it deserves approval. But even if that were not the case, the state law would remain what it is. I think we have a short presentation from the project applicant about specifics.
Good evening, good evening again, mayor and council members. I now have four minutes. Just to reiterate, this is an SB 330 preliminary housing application, and it was deemed complete, and it does meet all objective standards. This gives you a list of all the objective standards, which indeed the project does meet. Development plan, similar to the other one. We have put the townhomes along Hillcrest Avenue, so the front doors face outward. The back-to-back, back-to-back town, back-to-back townhomes are the purple buildings on the interior of the site. We have two very large common areas for recreation. We mentioned the potential for gates. We would like to go ahead and gate this community, to gate the entrances. That was something that the Wildflower Station project wanted originally, and the council denied that. And now the Wildflower Station folks have indicated that they have continuing concerns with people trespassing and creating crime. So we are working with them to go ahead and place gates if that homeowner's association and its residents will agree to that. This gives you a perspective of the community, as you can see how the buildings relate to Hillcrest Avenue and to the existing condominiums, Wildflower Station. And this is a view of the community if we were coming in on Wildflower Drive, so you get a sense of where this particular entrance would be, how the fencing relates to the remainder of the project, and also the massing of the buildings, as well as the considerable landscaping along the street edges. We have two product lines, the Road Townhomes, three-floor plans. All of them are two-bedroom en suite plans with a half-bath. They are three stories. Every unit has either an attached two-car or one-car garage with direct entry into the unit. Second levels have private balconies and decks. They do count towards the private open space. The second product line is a streetscape back-to-back. This is similar to what you saw in Slatton Ranch Road. Two-bedroom plan and three-bedroom plan. Again, downstairs on the ground level, attached two-car garages, direct entry into the units. And the light blue areas show the private outdoor space for each unit. The landscape plan shows you the very heavily landscaped edges, street edges along Hillcrest, as well as on Wildflower Drive, with the large bio-retention basin at the shared entry drive with the commercial units. This project does have two entryways, and also the large common areas. This is just a sample of one of the common areas with kids' play areas, open space areas, picnic tables, shade structures, that kind of thing. And this gives you a sense of what the community would look like as you're driving down Hillcrest Drive. It gives you a sense of how the project relates to Hillcrest. We do have a stairway and ramp directly from the middle of the project down to Hillcrest so people can go ahead and access the public sidewalk. As with Slatton Ranch, the HOA will own all the land, all the newly-created residential lots, common area parcels, buildings, and again, these are aerospace condominiums. And the HOA maintains the exterior of all buildings, certain interiors, including the fire sprinklers for safety, private interior streets, all the storm drain systems, and all common area landscaping. And in summary, it does conform to and is consistent with the city's general plan and housing objectives. It conforms to and is consistent with the city's multifamily objective design standards. It is conform to and is consistent with the development standards for R25 zoning and applicable municipal code requirements for multifamily housing. And we believe it will provide much-needed, right-sized housing with amenities suitable for its residents. We appreciate staff's recommendation of approval, and we concur with the conditions of approval. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have an opponent to the project?
Yes, we have Andrew Becker.
All right, that's why you bring a lawyer to the meeting. Let me tell you. And that's also because the cost for that lawyer are some of the reasons that affordable is not feasible. So, wow. Five and a half minutes to tell us what'll happen in court. Guess we don't even need to go to court. And hopefully that guy won't be there. He'll be there. That's what he says. So, I'll tell you. I'll tell you.
Excuse me, can you stop the clock real quick?
Thank you.
Please. Could the audience please refrain from comments or making cell phones, whatever? Please, appreciate that for the speaker's benefit and ours. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before I dive into my thoughts, I just wanted to read something really quickly. Building a Better Community. At DeNova Homes, our approach is simple. As a privately-held home builder, we thoughtfully develop each community, blending the character of the surrounding area with innovative design and superior craftsmanship. Committed to creating quality lifestyles for our homeowners, DeNova Homes is a respected Bay Area home builder and Builder of the Year by the Building Industry Association. DeNova volunteers in its communities with HomeAid Northern California, American Red Cross, American Cancer Society, and the Boys and Girls Club. Enthusiasm and dedication, that's what drives our management team and staff to provide exceptional leadership and even better results, ensuring DeNova Homes fulfills its longstanding commitment to build better communities. Hope I encapsulated everything there. DeNova Gives Back. Yellow Roof Foundation. Yellow Roof Foundation is a nonprofit public charity founded in 2018 by Dave and Lori Sanson. Founder is the Concord-based DeNova Homes Incorporated. The Yellow Roof Foundation is working to build affordable housing opportunities for families and individuals at risk of homelessness. Well, we talked about those regional housing need allocation numbers. And because the housing element is such a hot topic tonight, I'll continue to dive in and say that those actual numbers for our extremely low income, then our low income is 1,300 units. And that moderate that DeNova is targeting is 498. It's interesting, since the lawyer over here mentioned the last project, I'll go ahead and mention it. Between those two projects, you've got roughly almost 400 units. So they solved our moderate problem. Forget about the other 60% of development in the city. But then when you look at DeNova here in the city of Antioch, these aren't their first projects. They've been around the block, well, actually, forgive me. They built the block. How many homes have DeNova built in Antioch? Over 1,000? I would say it's probably close to that number, maybe more. How many yellow roof homes do we have here in the city? I think you guys just requested to approve six. Phenomenal. So the lawyer's right, in every regard. City attorney will tell you. The consultants they reach out to, to get clarity, that we as taxpayers will pay for, will tell you that too. So DeNova says, "There's nothing you can do, this has to happen." But they're wrong. Because there is something that could happen. They could listen to all this feedback, and they could work with city staff to amend their application to find something that works for the community. Oh my God. That's crazy. Oh my God. And for the response on density bonus, that never pencils because of the financial cost. Except for those little things that come along with that density bonus, like concessions and waivers, incentives for things like impact fees. And objective design standard waivers and incentives that defray your onsite costs. Wait, I forgot. But then you got to build more units, and some of them are affordable. And that's just more work to pencil out. Because then you got to hire all of these engineers and architects, and you got to pay for that. And why would you want to do that? Because you already got a standard that you've pushed out across the region. Because at DeNova Homes, our approach is simple. As a privately-held home builder, we thoughtfully develop each community, blending the character of the surrounding area with innovative design and superior craftsmanship. And to the proponent who wants to make sure things are entered in the record so that if it does go to court, everybody hears it, I want everybody to hear that too. And you know what's so frustrating? Is that DeNova started a project over off of Laurel, those townhomes? And then they said, "You know what? We're going to sell it. Because we can make money and somebody else can build it, and we can go do these other phenomenal products in your city." And then the developer says, "Well, your council denied those gates originally in the project." "Well, I don't know, maybe that's because you originally said you were going to do mixed-use, and how are we going to let the people access the Panda Express on the ground floor when there's a gate there stopping them?" "But you fixed it. You took out the Panda. You put in more homes. And you said the gate was for the people that were there that wanted it." Well, I have a question, DeNova. Those people wanted the gate there because they didn't have appropriate security on their site. And there was no accountability for the people that were breaking into the cars because you didn't put cameras there. Because it didn't pencil. And the city didn't require it, so why would you do that? That's silly. Well, if you go to Pittsburgh, they would. But that's Pittsburgh, this is Antioch. So let's go to the city where we can thoughtfully develop each community, blending the character of the surrounding area. We're going to blend it because across the street, they're doing 167, 168 units of affordable senior, 75 feet away, and then 600 feet in the other direction, they're doing 170 units. So between these three projects, we'll have 517 units. No, I'm sorry. I didn't do the math, but that's plus your 98 that you already built. Do you live in Antioch? Do you care about Antioch? You sent your lawyer up here to put everyone's hands behind their back when they said, "Let us take a 30-day pause to talk to you." I'm watching city staff scramble back and forth to try to address the problem, and you said, "I already addressed it." Because I hired that guy. Your commitment to our community, that yellow roof project on Viadora that you all walked away from and refused to stay engaged with our city staff on, and then you went and did another yellow roof where you built single-family homes market rate, and you're going to rent them out to people. So they'll never be able to own a home, but they'll pay the cost of a mortgage. But you put a park there, so the kids will be happy. The amount of property that we have in this city- The amount of property that we have in this city that is underdeveloped, the amount of property along Slatton Ranch by our Hillcrest BART station on the other side of this freeway that the state of California mandated we do high-density, you didn't even reach out to them, I would anticipate. And you know why? Because that property needs significant infrastructure improvements, and you just don't want to bond out or have to deal with any of that headache. So, you capitalized on all the state laws to bring this development. So, my last 15 seconds, if you have any decency and any heart, and you hear our community's needs, you would work to amend this application and capitalize on incentives that the city could work to provide for mixed-use development. And I consult in that, so I'd be happy to talk.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other public comments on this item?
Yes, Alora McGuire?
Hello again, Mayor and council members. My name is Alora McGuire with Adams-Broadwell on behalf of Contra Costa Residents for Responsible Development. We respectfully request that the council continue the hearing and remand the project back to staff to prepare a project-level EIR that addresses all of the significant and project-specific environmental impacts. Similar to the Slatton Ranch Townhomes project, the city claims that this project is consistent with the Housing Element EIR and thus does not require further CEQA review under CEQA Guidelines 15183. However, this only applies where there are no significant environmental impacts peculiar to the project. The city has not provided the analysis or evidence required by CEQA to make that conclusion. Additionally, we submitted comments supported by experts that identified significant project-specific air quality, public health, and noise impacts. The city has not adequately addressed those comments or resolved these issues. For example, the project will have significant health risks from construction and operation-related DPM emissions. The city failed to estimate those emissions, and the city states that only one mitigation measure from the Housing Element EIR applies, AIR 3A. AIR 3A requires Tier IV engines to be used, and our air quality expert prepared a health risk analysis factoring in use of Tier IV engines and found that health risks would still exceed BACMED significance threshold. The lifetime cancer risk would be 16.3 in 1 million. That's compared to the 10 in 1 million significance threshold. The city completely ignores this evidence, failed to perform any project-specific air quality analysis, and does not propose any other mitigation measures. Thus, the city lacks any evidence to support its conclusion that the project will have no significant air quality or health risk impacts peculiar to the project. Our noise expert also provided evidence that the project will have significant construction, noise, and vibration impacts. Despite this evidence, the city did not conduct a noise study or otherwise address our expert evidence on noise. Instead, the city claims that compliance with General Plan Policy 11.8.2 will ensure impacts remain at less-than-significant levels. The city's conclusion is unsupported because there is no discussion of existing noise conditions, how this project may affect existing noise, and no evidence that the measure, that implementation of Policy 11.8.2 will actually reduce impacts to less-than-significant levels. Additionally, the city fails to fully comply with the requirements of Policy 11.8.2, which requires a noise attenuation study to be prepared. The city lacks substantial evidence to conclude that the project will have no significant noise impacts peculiar to the project and must analyze those in a project-level EIR. For these reasons, we ask that the commission or that the council continue the hearing and remand the project back to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have Chris Moreno, Jason Lester, and Crystal Law?
Hello, Mayor, Council, city staff, and fellow members of the community. My name is Chris Moreno. I'm gonna try to keep it as concise as possible with five minutes. But I just wanted to come before you today and just focus on what we can control. So, I'm a resident of Wildflower 1. I'm also a board member on the HOA there. I'm here representing the 98 families that are currently there and fellow board members that are here as well. We're not here to focus on whether it's approved or not. We're not asking for it to be unanimously approved or denied. What we want to focus on is our safety. So, living in this community, I want to paint a little bit of a picture for you guys. So, on a constant basis, this community is subject to people cutting through the community to avoid traffic at extremely high rates of speed, going right through the community where everyone's parked, everyone's pulling out to go to work, everyone's loading their kids, right? So, significant safety issues, and now we're thinking about building a park on that same roadway, right? So, that's an extreme concern. The other piece is we do have an issue with the transients coming through there, going and rummaging through trash. On top of that, we also have issues with people illegally dumping in our trashes, costing significant money for not only the residents but also the city, because we've started to contact the city to come clean up illegal dumping on our property. We also have lots of issues with vandalism, right? So, we have vehicle break-ins consistently. We have folks coming and stealing things off of porches and all kinds of random items. We have folks that have mental crisis issues coming and chasing residents outside their homes, right? And it's a difficult situation because it's not like a single-family home. We can't just sit here and look at somebody and tell whether or not they belong here, right? So, it's not something that we can just easily police and ask somebody to leave, right? We don't want to get into that realm of having to police one another in that way. So, just trying to paint that picture and understand that it's costing us as residents there for these issues. It's costing the city money. Also, thinking about the police response, we're having to contact police several times. I would probably say maybe one to two times a week if it's non-emergency or emergency because of crises, folks dumping, all kinds of different things that we have there, theft of vehicles. The last time that this went in front of the Planning Commission, was it maybe like a month ago, that we've literally had two vehicles already stolen off the property from that time to now. So, it's a significant issue for us, and what we're asking is to add the fencing be fully constructed around both properties at the cost of, to the builder. Our property is only 17% of the total fencing for this property. The property that's being discussed for approval has the significant amount of fencing that would need to be considered there. I did go into a little bit more detail in the public comment we've submitted from the board on that information, but again, we're asking that to be added as a contingent item to approval if it gets to that point, making sure that the fence is built. I think one thing that I'll note, too, as my time's running out, SB 330 does have some ability for you to introduce certain things into the conversation, as long as you're not impacting the count of homes that they're building, things like that, right? So, you have a subjective way of going about and looking at public, significant issues with public safety, right? So, there's a very large impact to public safety without having some type of obstacle for people to not come into the community, right? So, we understand that opportunity for something to occur, which is this community being wide open to everybody, the opportunity is there. People are coming in, stealing cars. We have the records and the data from the police department to show us there is an issue with crime there. That is objective, right? And we can also look at statistics that tell us when we gate and fence properties, there's a percentage of impact that we can reduce crime in that community. So, that's objective. You have an opportunity to insert some type of contingency into approval under SB 330, so your hands are not completely tied. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Lester?
Good evening again. Jason Lester, business agent, local, 159 Plumber Steamfitters. I said everything I wanted to say the first time. I know you wanted me to save it for the second one, but the only thing that I didn't mention on this, on this project, the Wildflower Project, is 135 feet away from residences that would be exposed to the toxic emissions. So, the first project was 90 feet. This was 135 feet. And once again, there's not one project that's ever died from a city council upholding a CEQA appeal like we're asking for. So, thanks for your time. I'm just trying to speed it up. It's getting late, and I got kids at home. Thanks.
Crystal Law?
I realize that I'm taking up some time, but DeNove Homes faces problems, including homeowner complaints about builds, quality issues, and sloppy paint, horrible finishes, thousands of complaints, poor construction, frequent repairs, bribery issues, disputes over infractures, lawsuits and settlements. I just don't understand why they even had the ability to even get this far. Why are we still even including DeNove Homes and even allowing them to build here in the first place? We wouldn't even be in this position to have this lawyer come up here and tell us, "Oh, well, we can just sue you if you continue to tell us that we can't do it." So, basically, we're, you know, messed up, and basically, they're saying that we don't have a choice at this point except, but to accept their beautiful offer that doesn't have anything to do with what the city needs, nothing to do with what we need. We are mostly low-income families who cannot even afford to buy or purchase a home, especially in the ranges that they love to sell in. So, again, why are we even here?
Would anyone else like to comment?
Evening. I've been quiet tonight, so good evening, Council and community. So, apparently, I just found out that this group at the Wildflower Project that was recently developed, the developer didn't intend to actually stay and then put in the commercial properties, so they intended to leave, and that's intended to sell it. So, that's my comment. I want to say a whole bunch more, but it's late, so thank you.
There's no other speakers?
All right, seeing no other speakers, we will close the public hearing. All right, it's Council, Councilmember Freitas?
The hour is getting late. You know, I do want to quote from page four, the staff report background. "The project site was part of a larger 23-acre wildflower station project that included single-family homes, condominiums, and planned commercial development that was entitled in 2018. The single-family homes and townhomes were constructed, but the commercial properties along Hillcrest Avenue, the current site, project site, were not constructed, and the land sat undeveloped. The land sat undeveloped for seven years. I live very close to this project, and the gentleman who represents our HOA is absolutely correct. I've witnessed everything that you've talked about." The hour is getting late, but the situation is still the same, and I don't want staff to think that I'm criticizing them. You're implementing what has been approved and dictated by the state of California. Listening to the applicant's attorney, it reminded me of a little story. You know, one attorney in town usually is poor. Two attorneys in town, both are wealthy. And I think that unfortunately, that's a situation that we have here with today. Again, I was in this chamber when this project was approved, and it made such incredible sense to me because it provided some incredible housing, and the front portion of the property would be all commercial development. Again, seven years ago, it was desirable. DeNove, when they made the project, it was approved by council, they got a lot of high fives. "Oh, thank God. We're moving to the 21st century. We'll have denser development with commercial so that people can live and work." The other problem, the other issue that came up, you know, deals with transportation. You know, let's make no mistake about this. Where is this project? It's just down the street from the turnoff of Highway 4. It's close to BART. It's on Hillcrest, and right across the street is the Safeway Commercial Development. And so, there was a marriage between the property that was approved, the housing, and the commercial. So, here again, I feel like this council and others have a gun to our head and say, "You know what? Y'all not moving fast enough, so the state of California is going to make decisions for you. We're gonna take away your discretion." And that's what disturbs me the most. Now, maybe the applicant's attorney is absolutely correct, but Mr. Mayor and Council, I would like to, just on the previous item, we held it off. I would like to hold this off and give our staff the opportunity to review this matter and come back and see if we do have any options, because people elect us to make decisions that benefit the community. I don't think these two projects benefit the community. As a matter of fact, I think it's a detriment because we are losing very valuable property for economic development, and we have to take a long-term perspective, not a short-term perspective. With time, I'll stop right there, but I would recommend it when you're ready for a motion.
All right, any other comments, Council?
No, I echo Councilmember Freitas. I remember when this project first came before us, and it was so exciting to have the housing and then up front, the coffee shop, the laundromat, the restaurants, and it worked out perfectly for people that were gonna commute. They can come home. And so, it was just kind of dismaying and disappointing that the commercial was taken out, you know, because if the commercial was left in, it would have been a great project from, you know, the original project was a good project. So, it was just disappointing that that was taken out. But I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Freitas was saying, that it was, it made sense between what was there and the proximity to the BART station. Just making comments.
All right.
I guess I'm just interested in all these 30-year-old great projects and how we haven't got there. I'm just saying, is we, like, this is not like, I guess I'm just curious about, you know, there's always this conversation that comes back where people are saying, "Well, what it was supposed to be, what we thought we were gonna get, we took a drive, and that's not what we getting today." So, I guess, like, the question is, like, is all of that the responsibility, like, does all of that hinge on the state infringing on our local controls? And also, does some of that have to do with the lack of, like, clear strategies for economic development in the city that got us in this position, too? So, I mean, I clearly support postponing because I don't support projects that aren't affordable anyway.
I would just be repeating myself from the last conversation. I don't want to do that for the sake of time. I support moving this on with staff until, I think we said, mid-October, whatever the meeting date we discussed. So, I would support moving this to October for staff to review and come back with recommendations.
Yeah, it sounds to me like what we're experiencing here tonight is council's first taste of SB 330. You know, we haven't, we've heard about projects, for example, over there by In Shape, the 250 units that was approved. over there by In Shape, the 250 units that was approved. We, we knew nothing about it. It's, it's already designed, and it's going to be under construction, and we have nothing to say about it. And so, I think this is our first opportunity to actually see the effects of SB 330 and AB 130 and the Housing Accountability Act and all these other, all these other, all this legislation that's been passed over time that now has us in a position where we're more or less mandated to approve projects, whether we like them or not. So, I'm in favor of, of, as we did the last one, continuing this for 30 days and getting all of our facts together so that we can make an informed decision when we come back, second meeting in October. So, someone would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I will move that we delay this into the second meeting in October, correct, for us to have council come back to advise us. But I also, in this motion, I, I would also like to have, it doesn't have to be the second meeting in October, but a revisit on the properties that because of SB 330 that we have changed from economic development to housing and things of that sort, because I think this is a future preview of what we're going to come up against, and I think we, as a council, as a policymaker, need to know what they're all about.
Sure, and I know that we've rezoned some to residential, we have overlays and all kinds of different things, so I think that would be good to have a
A study session.
Grand scheme of things. So, we have a, we have a motion to continue this for 30 days, or until
The second meeting.
The second meeting in October. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The vote is four ayes with one abstention. To continue.
Who abstained on that?
Councilmember Torres Walker.
Okay, thank you. I am gonna ask that we take a five-minute break, restroom break real quick, and then before we do that, we, let's see how far we get along, how close we get to 11 o'clock when we get back with the next two items. So, we'll take a five-minute break.
The council will recess at 10:36 PM.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We're gonna get, we're gonna get started back again. If I could please get our, our city clerk to take the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Councilmember Freitas?
I'm sorry, present.
Councilmember Roca?
Torres Walker.
Councilmember Torres Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Roca?
You know, we, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
This is baptism by fire. You're trying really hard. I think you need to help him a little.
So, we have confirmation, and Councilmember Freitas is here, Councilmember Torres Walker, Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha?
Here.
Mayor Bernal?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum at 10:46 PM.
All right, excellent. So, do we, at this point, want to make a motion to extend the meeting past 11 o'clock, or do you want to just go until 11 and see where we are?
Mr. Ma, Mr. Mayor, can, can I ask the city manager, can we hold these two over?
I would hate that for us, but yes. I'm just kidding. Yes, 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 yes.
I, you know, I would, I would ask Councilmember Freitas if we would at least do the budget updates. I think that can go in, we can do that in 15 minutes.
Sure.
Okay, let's do, let's do the budget update, and then here we are.
Not if, not if Councilmember Freitas has a glossary of questions.
Does he?
We can't do it in 15.
Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead and try. So, Agenda Item 6 is fiscal, Agenda, Agenda My, six is fiscal year 2025-26 general fund budget update.
Where did you get snacks? Oh, sorry. Okay, yes.
You're cutting into the time.
Don Antoinette is here to give us a update of the first two months of the budget year, and we'll take your questions, one or two of them.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to provide a budget update for fiscal year 25-26 with the adoption of the 25-26 budget. In June, council asked for periodic updates on the budget. We're not that far into the fiscal year end, so this is through August 31, 2025, and it usually takes us each month, and we have to close some posing, post some closing entries. So, there's probably things that have adjusted and posted back to August 31 that aren't even captured in this report, just due to the timing of when we have to, you know, get the final packets to city council. So, let's go through this. So, first is a budget summary showing our adopted revenue, the budget stabilization funds, the $5 million that city council approved, appropriated fund balance, which means the use of fund balance, and expenditures of just $109.54 million. And at the bottom, you can see the projected beginning fund balance, the appropriated fund balance, which is the use of reserves, and the projecting, projected ending fund balance of almost $34 million. For fiscal year 26, total budgeted revenue is less than budgeted expenditures by $14,563, $463,475. The primary driver of this variance is flat and/or diminishing revenues, coupled with robust efforts to fill staff vacancies and provide expanded services. With the adoption of this budget, the city council approved utilizing $5 million in budget stabilization funds, and with that balance of the $33.9 million, the fund balance exceeds the established 20% reserve level for fiscal year 26. I will leave it up to the council.
Yeah, I think during is good.
Can you go back to the appropriated fund balance?
Yes.
Can you explain that again?
So, this is the use of reserves. When council adopted the budget, they approved using $5 million in reserves, and basically, the rest of the deficit that was projected would be absorbed by existing fund balance that would draw on the reserve balance but still maintain a level above 20%. It was just a different way to represent it than how it was represented at the budget adoption, just so you can see that the budget is balanced by use of the reserves. If you recall, you did ask Mayor, Member Freitas during the budget adoption if it was appropriate to use fund balance to balance. So, this is kind of representing that the budget is balanced between the budget stabilization funds and the use of existing reserves. So, we're gonna start off with revenues. As of August 31, you can see budgeted revenues by category total $94,977,349,000. As of August 31, we've collected $2,404,048, which is 2.15% of the budget. You would expect being two months of the year, two out of 12, approximately 16.67% of revenues to be collected, but not all revenues are basically amortized or cyclical and received 1/12 of the year. So, on the next page, here's some explanation as to why. So, taxes, which only .01% has been collected year-to-date, property taxes are received in three increments, with the first 50% not received until December. So, that's a huge portion of our revenues, so we're not even gonna receive anything until December. The first sales tax receipts for the fiscal year, including Measure W, our 1% sales tax, won't be received until September. Sales tax received in July and August are booked back to fiscal year 25 because therefore, the remaining closeout of fiscal year 25 sales tax collections. The city budgeted a 4% increase in property tax. The actual increase will be 4.7%, according to the July release from Contra Costa County, resulting in approximately $194,000 more in property tax revenue. That'll boost our budget. We'll recognize that in a future budget amendment. But unfortunately, based on the most current sales tax trends for the city through March 31, that's the latest data available from our sales tax consultants, they're projecting sales tax numbers to further decline by $235,256 for the base sales tax, but a slight uptick in Measure W of approximately $75,000 to help lessen the total impact. So, it's almost a wash between increase in property tax and the reduction in sales tax that we'll need to recognize.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Or Mr. Mayor. So, on, on this, the decline of the 235,000, I mean, the question is, you know, from where? Is it Costco that's causing most of the drop?
It's basically, overall, sales, I mean, when we reviewed the sales tax results with our consultants, basically, the city is down everywhere. There's very small gains, very few businesses that actually have gains.
So, Mr. Mayor, on this issue, I, I think maybe as we move forward, we, we kind of get in more of the information, you know, where's it kind of coming from to develop a strategy for economic development in the future? I mean, if we can identify the source, I think that would help drive the economic development program.
Yeah, and I, you know, we, we publicly cannot disclose which specific businesses, you know, we can tell the council this category, business to businesses down, for example, and then internally for our economic development staff, they can see the actual businesses and reach out and target for more detailed analysis that you're suggesting.
And we do have the strategy, you know, with the general plan kickoff on the 21st, the economic development element going first, as well as the new director coming in on the 6.
Part of this was to try to be proactive versus reactive, so you're now giving us information, so now we can try to be proactive and learn from, from whatever the information tells us.
Absolutely. So, we haven't collected, as of August 31, anything for fines and penalties. That category mainly represents vehicle code fines received from the county and DMV. Payments for July and August will not be received until the September and October timeframe, so we'll have to wait till the next budget update to kind of see how that's tracking. Revenue from other agencies is only 10.25%. Homeowner's property tax relief, which is budgeted $75,000, the first allocation will not be received until next April. State mandated reimbursements, which are budgeted at $60,000, will not be received until June. And then, $20,000 was received year-to-date. That's the total, is for the Economic Development Mobility Grant, which was awarded, that was not budgeted for, so that will be included in future budget amendment. Current service charges are at 12.19%. The two largest revenue sources in this category are cannabis fees and inspection fees. For both of these revenues, only collections through July are accounted for. August cannabis fees will not be paid until September, and billings for August staff time, inspection time, will not be done until September. In the other revenue category, which is just a whole mishmash of stuff, 3.22%, miscellaneous revenues are not cyclical in nature and are received at various times throughout the fiscal year. And then, transfers in, 0%. These are generally, the majority are booked either at December 31 and June 30, meaning 50% in December and 50% in June, or just at June 30, depending on the source of the transfer in. Now, for expenditures, the budget for expenditures, you can see by category of department, is $109,54824. As of August 31, 2025, expenditures are $23,439,704, 21.4%, which is a little bit higher than the 16.67, and these next slides will explain that variance for that. So first of all, the expenditures were increased $1,826,144 from the adopted budget. You can see in these two side-by-side tables, the reason being that with the capital improvement budget was adopted in June, that resolution authorized the budget rollover of remaining CIP projects to fiscal year 2026. So $1,826,144 of project funds for the police department were re-appropriated, rebudgeted to the current fiscal year. And as a result of this, expenditures went from the $107,714,680 to $109,54824. Essentially, what this means is that expected expenditures in fiscal year 25, as a result, are 1.8 million lower than projected and then being rebudgeted to fiscal year 26. So expenditures by category, personnel, services and supplies, transfers out, internal services, the total again representing the 21.4%. I've notated on here some of the expenditure variances, personnel. Personnel expenditures actually, as of August, should be 15.38%. And that is because payroll is bi-weekly. We don't get paid twice a month. We get paid every other Friday. So it's 26 pay periods per fiscal year. So that's why it's just slightly different than the 16.67%. And then a majority of the transfers out are not done until fiscal year end because that's the subsidy to recreation services and, and animal services. And then the internal services, which is our cost allocation, as we went over during the budget review, those are posted quarterly at September 30, December 31, March 31, and June 30. So for personnel costs, you can see total personnel is budgeted at $68,382,528. As of August 31, we've spent $15,370,440, which comes to 22.48% of that budget. And here is overtime by department. There's $3,62,558 budgeted in overtime. $748,601 has been sent, spent. You can see the police department, the overtime spent is higher than what we projected at 25.59%. This is due to the 4th of July National Night Out events that occurred in July and August, and low-level staffing as they're still trying to fill vacant positions. And then community development is at 31.17%. That is due to the conversion of the signation process from a third-party vendor to the in-house EPL system. So staff had to do some work to get that up and running. So overtime should level out for the rest of the year for community development. It's just kind of a spike in these couple months while they got that process in place. So in terms of expenditure variances, and this will kind of address the personnel, for finance, the percentage is high, 24.52%. That is because approximately $1.18 million of the finance budget is allocated out through other funds, through the cost allocation plan, the internal services. And the reduction of those expenditures to be spread out to other departments is not going to happen until September 30, December 31, March 31, and June 30, as I explained on the prior slide. Non-departmental, the percentage seems just exorbitant at 70.73%, but that is because the city's insurance premiums for general liability, workers' comp, everything is due in July for the entire fiscal year. So the general fund paid $4,753,475 for its share of general liability premiums. In July and August, those were paid. So that makes the percentage be significantly higher than expected results. And the police services budget is 23.65% higher, and that is because the city pays the CalPERS unfunded actuarial accrued liability payment for the fiscal year upfront to recognize some interest savings on the payment rather than paying it monthly. So $7,106,130 was paid in July, thus causing the percentage spent to be significantly higher than expected results. And that is for the, the safety plan. Animal services, subsidy is 0%. That is because that doesn't take place until June 30, when the amount needed at year-end is known. Recreation, community services, the majority of this budget is for the subsidy at year-end. It's only 1.16%. So the rest of that will occur at June 30. Public safety and community resources, it's only 7.89%. Expenditures are below expected results, mainly due to $400,000 included in the budget for the potential of the home key match. So the city's still awaiting results of the grant application, thus no costs have been incurred. For staffing update, the new community and economic development director starts October 6. All director positions are currently filled between permanent and acting positions. One new police captain and one new police lieutenant, as required under the DOJ memorandum of understanding, are expected to start by the beginning of November or in the November timeframe. There are two police officer recruits that will graduate the academy October 31 and one more on December 18. The grant writer position is currently being filled on a contract basis. And just a notation regarding overtime for the police department, as mentioned, the July 4 and National Night Out. But then there will be additional costs for New Year's Eve. In addition, officers are working overtime due to staffing shortages, staff and dispatch to work overtime to ensure adequate public safety. And whenever there's court appearances required, that requires overtime as well. And when I, as I, when I put this presentation together, there were 70 citywide vacancies. Forty-six positions have been hired since January 1, 2025. However, there have been 42 separations in that same timeframe. So a net gain of only four positions over this whole time. So in closing, we're still in the process of closing the books for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2025. Preliminary unaudited numbers will be provided to the City Council at the second council meeting in November. A request for proposal was issued for a comprehensive cost allocation and fee study. Bids were due August 21. City staff is in the process of reviewing bids and scheduling interviews with respondents. Completion of this project in the next calendar year provided basis to ensure we are charging adequate fees for services, and this will aid the city in building the next master fee schedule that will be considered by City Council in May 2026. A request for proposal was also issued for a development impact fee study update. Proposals are under review and will provide a basis for potential revised fees to ensure new development is paying for their share of service expansion. We plan to provide the next budget snapshot in January 2026, just to get a more robust feel of expenditures and revenues, particularly with the property tax coming in in December. But of course, in November, we will be providing an update on how the June 30, 2025 books look. So with that, I'll turn it over to any final questions for council.
All right. Thank you very much, Dawn, for the, for the update. Any, any questions from, or do we have any public comment on this item, first of all?
I think we might need a vote to extend the meeting.
Do we have a vote to extend this meeting?
Proposed to extend the meeting beyond 11 o'clock. Went to 11:15?
I'll, I'll, I would like to make a motion to extend this meeting till 11:15.
Second.
Motion second to extend the meeting to 11:15. Please catch your votes. Everybody's freaking out. All right.
Vote is unanimous, five to zero.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have one comment.
Thank you to city staff for the presentation and to council for the time. You know, I just wanted to point out, you know, that while I appreciate all the work that city staff is doing, right, the burden doesn't fall on them. The burden falls on the economic position of our city, right? And how do we support our city? How do we get development off the ground? How do we support operators and build up the sales tax revenues? And just a bit of a snapshot of the situation that the city of Antioch is in. Oakley Logistics Center, 2.2 million square feet, was finally approved by the city of Oakley in December of 2019. January, late January of 2020, they broke ground. And they had their first tenant, Amazon, in by the end of 2020 in September. That's 2.2 million square feet, that in assessed value is just a little over $100 million. The 1% that comes in from that property annually is $1,600, roughly. The city of Antioch in 2018 approved DECA East and DECA West. And to date, I'm sorry, 2023, and to date, that project has not, to my understanding, applied for permits, submitted final documents, and has a plan to break ground. Now, that build-out is 900,000 square feet roughly. And so an assessed value estimate on par with that Oakley Logistics Center, you're looking at about a 40%, 1% there. Off of the $1.1 million, that's about $400,000. The current assessed value on the property to date, and the 1% that comes in to date that is being collected, is $42,000. The NOCS dealership was given a tax incentive back in 2018, what media has called a sweetheart deal, and then extended to a tenure. So it was initial five and then given another five, with the promise that they were going to move a new dealership into the AAA facility. Now, the current Toyota dealership there, to date, draws about $400,000 in 1% revenue. So on par, you would think a dealership across the street would net a similar 1% revenue. That AAA facility today, as it sits, brings in $30,000 in 1% revenue. And frankly, our sales tax revenue is down because residents don't feel comfortable shopping in our shopping centers. And by and large, that's a bulk of our sales tax revenue here in the city of Antioch as neighborhood commercial. So get our developers to build and clean up our shopping centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, public comments? All right, seeing none, council?
None.
Council want to make any comments about the report? No?
Thank you.
I think, Dawn, the, the thing in council member, or not council member, City Manager Scott, the thing that, thing that I took away from it is the fact that the revenues come in sporadically. So it's hard, it's hard to sometimes project, like, what our revenues are going to be. In, in November, when you do the true-up from, for the end of fiscal year 25, will you, will you be able to have better numbers than we have today as far as our projections?
It won't necessarily have better projections because, again, we won't have the, you know, property tax, for example. And then even sales tax, we'll get the next, we'll probably, I might have an update on the sales tax projections in November. I'm not sure if we'll have it in time for the meeting. But I mean, I can definitely just include this is what our revenues are through October 31, just to kind of give an update that way.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be helpful just to give a, you know, so your, your report says that you'll come back in January with the next version of this, which kind of makes sense. Since December, we'll get revenues in, and September, I think you said, so.
Right.
And then some of our expenses will probably level out as well, right, over, over that six-month period?
Right. For example, you know, we'll be almost 50% of the year. So the liability insurance, for example, will have spread six months of it. So it won't seem so huge over just two months. It'll then, you know, kind of somewhat be spread over six months, even though, you know, so it won't take up as huge of a chunk of the use of the budget, for example, so.
And then, being that we're on a one-year budget right now, when, when do you expect we're going to be starting the budget process?
Probably the January, February timeframe. Again, you know, we have the proposed 26-27 numbers. We'll just be asking city staff to update those figures for any changes that have happened throughout the year. And then kind of, you know, definitely starting the study session process again with, we had, you know, given the council the list of proposed cuts to 26-27 that pretty much mirrored 25-26. But I know there was some discussion of, you know, not necessarily carrying or, carrying those over, agreeing to those same items for 26-27. So those will be all under consideration again for council. If they want to carry forward those same mitigating factors, we should hopefully have some idea on how sales tax is looking and any other mitigating factors we're able to kind of start to do by then, to know how our deficit, is it still looking the same? Is it looking larger? Is it looking smaller? You know, get more council direction, especially once the priority sessions are completed, that council started, to see then, you know, do we start looking more at programs and services, more in line with whatever the final priorities are established by City Council, and building that into the 26-27 budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right. So that, that item was just to receive and file this report. So I don't think we need a motion from council. So thank you very much for that. All right. Item number seven, discussion item, input on amendment to the ordinance that created the Antioch Police Oversight Commission. It's 11:09. Do we want to move this to the next city council meeting and take it on as the first item? I see heads nodding. So do I have a motion to continue item number seven to the, to the first city council meeting in October?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please catch your votes.
Vote is unanimous, five to zero.
All right. Thank you. Public comments?
Yes, we have. Melissa?
Melissa?
No, I was going to do item seven, but not yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Staff communications?
Thanks so much, Mayor and City Council. Just a couple of things. I'll be reaching out to you for your district meetings for the fall and winter. I know that some of you have done them, some of you have not. So we'll be helping you set those up if you want those meetings. So thank you to Councilmember Wilson for including some of us on Saturday. Mayor Protem, we have you scheduled for a USD to host your district meeting. And we need to talk about dates. And so anyone else will just be reaching out to you for your district meeting. I know the mayor's having some as well. And I just want to give a shout out to Director Store, who's gone. Oh, okay, yes. So his group, along with other groups, have developed a dashboard to come to council and public facing to tell you what's going on with our permits, fines and fees collected. It's really cool. So we're going to be launching that across different, the different departments as well. And we just want to thank you for the new cars for PD, and our code enforcement got new cars. So huge shout out to Fleet for getting those ready for us. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you so much. Council communications and future agenda items. Councilmember Freitas?
Just one. November 11 is a holiday, and so I don't want to do it tonight. But next meeting, we need, if we're going to have one meeting or two meetings, what's the schedule going to look like in November?
Okay. We will, we can look at our calendars, or we can, you know, put out something before then, try to, try to come up with a date to, to either cancel that meeting or to do, do it, move it. So thank you. Councilmember Torres Walker, did you have anything?
Just that Supervisor, Supervisors Fergus, as well as Skills Preston are hosting Impact Fund meetings to have discussions with the community around how to spend their million dollars in ARPA funds. And I would just encourage the community of Antioch to actually attend those meetings and email the supervisors, because there will be no town hall in Antioch, unfortunately. And it's a short timeframe. There are also surveys out there. So if you can, you know, I, I, I have pushed back and said that it was unfortunate that Antioch didn't get a town hall when we have two supervisors that represent us. But that doesn't mean that our voice need to be silenced in the process. And so we, we clearly need resources in Antioch. And I would just encourage residents to turn out to those meetings and email our supervisors with some of your ideas of how those funds should be spent in our city.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
I can get the dates. And just want you to know that Public Safety Community Resources, Montserrat Cabral, is working with our nonprofits on getting their suggestions and applications in for that opportunity. So Rika and all those chair, so we're actually helping our nonprofits get our resources asked for.
I, I just think that it's some, it's even unfortunate to hear that there are already organizations applying for funds that the community have not yet expressed what we would like to see. And the meeting is actually September 25. The District 30 town- And the meeting is actually September twenty-fifth, the District Thirty Town Hall, to discuss the community impact funding, and that will be hosted at the Oakley Recreation Center at twelve fifty O'Hara Avenue, Oakley, California, and I don't see the time, six-thirty?
I believe it's six-thirty.
Yeah, six, six-thirty, so be there at six.
Is that Supervisor Burgis's?
That's Supervisor Burgis's, and then I'm sure we could find more information around the meeting happening in Pittsburgh, hosted by Supervisor Skills Preston.
So the, the twenty-fifth is this Thursday night?
This Thursday night, yes.
Okay, six-thirty, Oakley Rec Center.
Six o'clock, my apologies.
Six o'clock, Oakley Rec Center. All right, thank you. All right. Councilmember Wilson, do you have anything?
I'll save it to the next meeting.
Okay, Mayor Proton? All right, I don't have anything as well. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No, we want to stay. So moved.
All right, I have a motion, motion second, please catch your votes. Eleven fifteen.
Vote is unanimous, five to zero.
All right.
To adjourn the meeting at eleven fifteen.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk.